I am ready when you are, my friend.
You can go ahead and start. I'm logging into Zoom. Yeah, I'm ready.
You're ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go ahead then. Thanks, Mike. Welcome, everybody, to the November 14 Board of Selectmen meeting at our new time, 6:00 p.m. We thought that it might make sense to get everybody home a little earlier, so we're gonna start meeting at 6:00 from this point forward.
Oh, good.
We always start to remind everybody that we're video recording you, and we also want to take a moment to start with appreciation for our troops who are serving around the globe. Thank you. We added a new appointment, Deputy Chief Barry McGrath, to request the appointment of the following individuals to the Medfield Police Department: Peter Braswell as a student officer contingent on meeting academic prerequisites, and Robert Hain as a special officer. Hi, Barry, thanks for coming. Thanks for finding us new officers.
Thank you. Peter Braswell, who is our student police officer, is not here tonight. He's preparing, getting all his equipment ready for the academy. So we have here tonight a special police officer that I'm recommending that the board appoint. His name is Robert Hain. He is a police officer currently with the Northeastern University Police Department in Boston.
Oh, good.
He's working on a double bachelor's and continuing on to his master's degree. He comes to us with tons of experience. He's a sexual assault investigator and instructor for the MPTC, and his goal is to, hopefully, when we leave civil service in March, to apply and be hired as a full-time police officer here. In the interim, we'd like to take him on as a special police officer and get him rolling, get him uploaded, and that's my request tonight regarding Robert Hain.
Any questions, Gus?
Sounds good to me.
I'm thrilled. I'm happy to have him on board. I had a chance to meet him. I got here a few minutes before you, gentlemen, so thrilled.
Would the board object if I had Robert's father pin him quickly with the badge?
Absolutely.
It's Robert's father, Robert Senior.
Friend, remove the tripping hazard. You don't need two surgeries on your...
Oh, sure, absolutely.
You want us? Or you just want us out of the background?
No.
You want? Oh, okay. All right.
Are we jumping into the family photo?
You take the center this time.
Give me one second.
Yeah, I got kicked off.
Yeah.
Barry was asking me if he should do this, so I told him we should talk to you, so...
Okay, hold. Let's see if we can get you back up.
When you can focus.
Hold on.
Town administrator and IT specialist. Fine. No bargain.
Let's see. Mike, are you off too?
Yeah, we all went off, but he wasn't.
I have no internet.
Well, it did shut down for a second, but...
Okay on that. Let's try.
Let's relaunch this and see what happens.
At least.
We got kicked off Zoom.
Well, you know what's funny is Pete's still on.
Yeah.
Pete's still on?
That's bizarre that if you're the host, that he's still on.
AI.
More power than we actually want to recognize here.
That's right. I shut you off.
Does that mean we get to go on?
My AI system determined that you weren't as important as I was.
Oh, now I'm on.
We're good. Are we good, Frank?
I am back on.
Okay. So the important thing is, Chris, whether you're ready to answer Barry's question about something that we, whether we need to do it or not.
I know it was addressed initially by members of the board, but I would like to officially request that student police officer candidate, Peter Braswell, be accepted to attend to the academy contingent on his successful graduation.
Do you need a second vote for that? Okay. So do you want me to do the formal so that we approve the appoint, motion to approve the appointment of Peter Braswell as student officer contingent on meeting academy prerequisites and Robert Hain as special officer?
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Thank you all for coming, gentlemen. Our next appointment is a public hearing solicitors license power home remodeling. Fabrice Renee Avery Zoscheck Zachary Pickett.
So they have not joined the Zoom yet, so why don't we move forward for Nancy Irwin?
Oh, then we get to do the fun thing. Recognition of Nancy Irwin for the 2023 Municipal Award from MassRecycle for an outstanding municipal waste reduction program at the swap.
Yes, it is outstanding. That is outstanding.
So we have an official proclamation.
Oh, good.
So the town of Medfield, Commonwealth Massachusetts, certificate of appreciation for outstanding municipal waste reduction program at the swap presented to, this is in addition to all the accolades from the state. This is the important stuff. Your hometown. Presented to Nancy Irwin in recognition of your dedicated service to the town of Medfield and testimony where other selectmen signed it all. Thank you so much for everything you've done with the swap.
You know Medfield loves the swap.
Oh, I know.
You want us up front again?
Let's go front.
You gotta get us up front.
She has a few words to say. I have a few words. Well, I did ask if I could talk for five or 10 minutes, maybe 15. Depends on how much time.
Heck, we're running 45 minutes early right now.
Well, thank you very much. I really, really appreciate this. I'm very honored that you would give me this certificate of recognition. Just as I was honored by the state to get it, I was really blown away. I, of course, think that the swap here in Medfield is fantastic.
It is.
It's been going on for many, many years. I've been involved for maybe 15 to 20 years doing this, and I think it's spectacular. And it was just fantastic to think that the state recognizes how wonderful the swap is, too. So someone from the Department of Environmental Protection wanted to meet with the transfer station and recycling committee, and they wanted to meet at a coffee shop. And I said, well, we can't meet at a coffee shop. It's a swap day, and that's where I will be. So this woman, Missy, came down to the swap, and she was totally overwhelmed. She was amazed that it was so big, that it was so organized, that we had so many swap volunteers down there that were smiling and happy and wanting to help the customers drop off their items or find the missing item that they were looking for. And she suggested that the rest of the committee, unbeknownst to me, submit my name to the state to win the award. So like, I was really, I was just blown away. I was just so excited. And I'm still excited. I am still excited. It's just every place I go in town, people talk to me about it, you know? So it's like, yes, it's great. So, but I did, I really, yes, the award was for me, but I do want to say that it's really about Medfield. You know, I am so glad that Medfield got put on the map for this, for something positive, you know, and that the state appreciates it. And in fact, I was at the hospital today awaiting a medical appointment for my husband and began talking to another patient waiting there. And she is from Waltham, and she had heard about the Medfield swap. So it's like, you know, it's like, it's great. And when I was getting my award at the Hines, people came up to me and asked me if I could please help their town develop a swap. And I said, I would be very glad to. I said, it doesn't happen overnight. It takes many, many hours, many years even, and it takes a lot of people to be involved. The town administration, the DPW, the police departments, you know, it takes a lot. It takes a lot. But really, it's about Medfield. And then my second point is, again, it's about Medfield because, yes, I am the coordinator of the swap, and yes, I know a lot of people because I've lived in town for like 47,000 years. So I know a lot of people, and I ask people to help. But it takes a village, and there are 25 regular volunteers, two of which are here now today, and they help out daily or weekly or monthly. There are 25 of them that help out during the season, which is from May 1 until the end of September. And then there are additional 20 people that help out at the end of the season to help clean up, and they help out in April to get ready to open up. We also encourage teens to come down from the high school. Teens help out from the churches. They come from the scouts. So like, it does take a village. So it's all about the Medfield village. So, and our purpose, of course, at the swap is to divert items from the waste stream. And so people can come in for their half an hour a day of shopping, and they take things for their own personal use or their family use or whatever. But we also partner with New Life. So I don't know if you know what New Life is, the organization in Walpole that helps people that get out of homelessness. And weekly, we send carloads of items to New Life of pots and pans and dishes and even furniture. There's a man that goes on the weekends on the furniture, to take the furniture over there. So we partner with them. We are partnered with CMRK, which is an awesome organization here in Massachusetts that does a lot of recycling. They take our excess because we have so much stuff at the swap that we can't keep it all there all the time. So we do clean up a little bit each day and bring it to CMRK that has, they have a container onsite at the transfer station. So the volunteers pack things up, bring things up to the trailer, and they clean out that trailer twice a week. So the stuff gets taken and gets used. This year, we partnered with Bikes Not Bombs so that a man came and took the bikes away every, some of the bikes away every week, and he took even the ones that were rusted and broken because he was teaching kids, I think mostly kids, how to refurbish these bikes. So like, again, we're all into recycling, reusing, renewing, refurbishing. So I don't know if I was going to say anything else. Was there anything else?
Nancy, we know that it wouldn't happen without you, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. So like, yes, yes, it wouldn't happen without me because I organize the volunteers, but it's the volunteers who do the work. So like, I really want to say it's about everybody.
It is. It is.
Do people ever share stories with you? Like, do they come back and say, I got the following, and this is how I use? I mean, it's gotta be some fascinating stories.
And a couple of years ago, we did do this, and we didn't seem to have time this past year, but I will try to reinstitute it. We had people take pictures of what they took away from the swap, the before, and then they would come back with what they did with it, take a picture of the after. So like, we did have a big bulletin board there a couple of years ago. So, yes. And so like, sometimes people get overexuberant, the helpers, and they want to throw things away. And I say, no, 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 we don't want to throw things away. You'd be amazed. Somebody comes along and takes an odd-looking thing that doesn't work and brings it home and then makes it into an awesome decoration. So, you know, there's a place for everything. So like, that's why I'm so excited about the swap because it saves a lot of stuff being thrown in the waste stream. I assume it saves a lot of money. We don't really have a way of documenting that, I don't think. But also, now, the swap is only open for five months, so it's May 1 through the end of September. And in April, we begin to get ready because we have to wash down all the tables and shelves and bins and set everything up. And we set up a, we have the two permanent tents there, but then we have to set up the furniture tent. So that takes time in April, and we get some of these volunteers to help do that. And then usually in September, usually the last weekend in September, we're able to clean up. This year, it took us three weeks into October because of the weather, because it rained. We can do a lot of cleanup in the rain, but you can't take down the furniture tent and pack it away wet in the rain. So it really takes a lot of time. So we're open for the five months, and then opening and closing takes another sort of two months. But we also do clothing drives throughout the non-season. So we had one just recently, a few weeks ago, at St. Edward's Church. We will do that two or three times throughout the non-swap season, and probably twice we'll do a household goods collection as well. That's not a swap as such because you can't come and take things away like you can at the swap. But it is a way for people to declutter and take it to someplace really worthwhile. So I think that's, I didn't really prepare anything, so like, I'm not sure if I'm forgetting anything or anybody. But, and I also did want to say that the staff at the transfer station are absolutely fantastic. I check in with them every day. I work most every Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday, all day. I work four miles a day when I'm down there. I've lost a lot of weight from being down there, so if anybody wants to come down, on down. So I check in with Johnny at the transfer station every time in there, and he and Bill are tremendous helps to me. Answering questions, taking away excess items, and occasionally dealing with a difficult customer, which is not often because usually I can do that myself. But sometimes I need help, yes. So I didn't want to forget anybody. I may have forgotten to say thank you to somebody, but I don't mean to because it does take a village. It takes this whole town of Medfield. And so I will be recruiting, well, those same 25 people, I think, will come back again next year, don't you think? But I was going to recruit maybe 25 more because frankly, I had no break at all this year. That's why I lost the weight. I had no time to sit down and eat lunch. So I would like to eat lunch occasionally. So I think I'm going to try to recruit 25 more. Yes. So we'll see. So, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Gus?
I appreciate what you're doing, Naz.
Okay. So I'm old. You realize I'm old, but I'm still planning to help out, to still organize the swap.
Wow, you should be so proud.
For a while, so.
You know that around town, people love it, and they talk about, you know, people coming in from other towns, people bring friends, and just to me. So kudos to you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Nancy, I've always thought that the swap created a huge amount of entertainment for our residents, and now I understand that it can also do weight loss. And I think you can charge for that, actually. You can charge your volunteers for weight loss.
See, a consulting gig here for all the other towns.
Yes, right.
Thanks for what you do.
Oh, you're welcome. And thank you. Thank you so much for this. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. We're up to the school building committee to provide progress update to select board and school committee at 7:00 p.m., so we're not there yet. We'll just go on around them, I guess.
Yep.
Discussion and update on community choice aggregation committee.
I think that may be me because I think I'm the only one from the committee who's here tonight. Just very briefly, a couple of things. Just in terms of status, the Medfield Community Choice Aggregation Plan was submitted to DPU over a year ago. I think it went in in August of 2022. The statewide, the DPU is processing these plans in the same way, pretty much the same way that they would process some solar energy producer that has a big solar farm that wants to sell electricity out in the market through ever sources, the distributor. So what that means is that all of the consumer protection concerns the DPU might have for commercial renewable energy suppliers who might, for instance, convince people to sign on for eight cents kilowatt hour that's only good for the first six months for a three-year contract, and then all of a sudden, the rates go through the roof, which apparently has happened, you know, here in Massachusetts. All those kinds of things the DPU is trying to protect against. The unfortunate thing is that then grinds their detailed review of all the plans that are being submitted by all the towns to almost a screeching halt. We've been waiting for more than a year. There are towns that are actually waiting for three and four years to get approval. So it could be worse. Because of that, two things have happened. One is the legislature is taking a look at passing laws that will sort of presumably improve this whole situation so the communities that are trying to do an aggregation program like we are can get approval of their plans faster. So that's grinding its way through the legislature. And you may recall in our meeting in October, one of the things that we signed was the letter, kind of throwing the town's weight behind the feedback to the legislature, please push this thing through and get it done. The same time, DPU has been, has developed a set of draft guidelines, which are their kind of administrative slash regulatory response to the problem. So they have this big set of guidelines that are in place that are sort of proceeding independent of the legislation. So we've, as some of you at least might know, we are working with Good Energy as our consultant. So they've been taking the lead on a lot of this legislative type initiative along with other towns and with other similar consultants. The past couple of weeks, we've been working, we've had several teleconferences actually, and one of them was actually with Oxford because they're kind of in the same boat as we are, taking a look at those guidelines. And what happens with administrative guidelines coming out of state agencies is they put the draft guidelines out there and then ask for comments. And then there's a fairly long iterative process where you put a comments in, and then you can see everybody else's comments, and you can comment on their comments, and that all gets ground through the machine and presumably, DPU decides what to... And that all gets ground through the machine and presumably DPU decides what to pay attention to or what not to pay attention to. So that process is going on as well. And, and right now, everything is sort of going in, sort of in that second iteration. And who knows exactly what will happen. But the basic gist of the comments that we had, and you know, Good Energy gets credit for crafting these things, but it made sense to us, was to basically get DPU to back off from some of the very specific requirements they have. If you make a mechanical change to your plan, where you have to submit the plan to get it reaproved. And a mechanical change, I'm talking about a different, you know, offering a different offering. Uh, so right now, the way our plan at least is tentatively set up is there will be a default. Anybody who's on Eversource Basic Service would be defaulted into this plan if we ever get it up and running and approved and we have a contract. That default would be higher in renewables than the state's basic requirement that they have for Eversource. So if you think of the renewable level for basic service at Eversource, which is where you are, if you haven't chosen anybody, you're at Eversource Basic Service. This would be higher than that, but the goal would be, and based on experience so far, this is achievable. At least so far it's been achievable, is to actually have that higher level of renewable actually cost less than the Eversource Basic Service. So that's kind of what we're striving to set up when this thing gets up and running. There actually is, there actually is a basic option that we apparently have to provide that would be comparable to the Eversource Basic Service in terms of renewables. And that's, that's not where people would default to, cause the whole point of this is to get people to be using more renewables. There's another option, easy one is a hundred percent renewable. So you can go all the way up. That's gonna be more expensive, obviously. And then what we've, uh, been, we're hoping we'll get approval for is something that we're calling Medfield Mid, which is midway between the state's requirement and the hundred percent. And the reason we're trying to set it up that way is because every year the state increases the baseline renewable. So if you were to, right now, I think it's, if I remember right, I think it said it was at fifty-two percent renewable. So if you did mid right now, you'd be at seventy, you know, seventy-six percent would be where the mid would be. But if, if that base number keeps going up, then the seventy-six gets less and less of an increment above whatever the standard is. So we were trying to keep it where it was always halfway there with the thought that some people, uh, might be interested in, in paying a little more for renewables, but might not be sure that they wanna jump in with both feet at the hundred percent mark. So it's sort of a place that people can do something good without necessarily having to go all the way. The issue came up and you all should know about this. So we, we had the one letter that we approved in our meeting in August, which was the response back to the state for the legislation. This process that the Community Choice Aggregation Committee is going through to provide feedback to the DPU. A couple of weeks ago, a question came up, well, can we get the, the select board to sign off on this next thing we're gonna put in? And that's sort of like the first letter that went into a sausage making process. I suggested to the committee that you don't wanna go to, that the select board, so I'm talking for all three of us without having actually talked to you and gotten your permission, which is why I'm talking about this today, that the select board doesn't necessarily need to be involved in approving every step in the process of making the sausage. That when we get to some final point, that would be the place to come back. And, and what I've offered to the committee, but what I wanna make sure you two know, I offered it to make sure you're good with this, is I basically, uh, suggested to the committee that I would give them guidance on whether this was a significant enough step that should come to the town, should come to the select board, or if in fact this would be something that it would be fine for Bob Winograd, the committee chair, to sign off on behalf of the town of Medfield. And, and you gotta understand, these are all the incremental iterative steps that I don't think we wanna be involved in. So basically told the, the committee, if I screw that up and you two get mad about it, I will catch, I will take the flak for that, that they don't have to if they're relying on me. But I said all that without actually asking permission from you two to do it that way. So that's the question I have for you tonight is, are you two okay with that?
Do you have feedback for Gus on that?
No, I think we're good. I mean, if I'm not mistaken, this started like a year and a half ago. Where they came in, they talked about it, they filed everything. Now where we passed that year. So no, I, I, I understand where you're coming from and I'm good with it.
And for, for anyone who's just generally interested, I don't know whether this is what will really happen. But Penny Connor, in, uh, one of the calls we had, had mentioned that Eversource has as its target to be at a hundred percent renewable by 2035.
Okay.
So when we talk about a community choice aggregation plan that's designed to try to get people to overachieve against the state standard, and Eversource, if, if their plans come through, is already planning to hit a hundred percent renewable 2035, we only have twelve more years where this program, at least as we're conceiving it, is gonna have much of an impact at best. Uh, which is kinda why, on one hand, the state wants us to do this. On the other hand, DPU carrying out its role effectively. We're, we got the state working at cross purposes with itself for purposes of getting more renewable into the, into the, uh, energy stream.
Okay.
So Gus, I'm fine with your going forward as well. Um, I did, so when you're done, I, I did have some input.
I think those are the main, those are the main points unless you have questions or if anybody else has.
All right. So the, the, the points that I was asked to bring to the two of you from the energy committee was that the community choice aggravation, aggravation. Aggravation, um, has, uh, two adders. And, and Bob Winograd wanted everybody, the, the select board to be aware that those are out there. And it's, so I'm sure you're aware of it. I don't know if you are, but it get, the adders are a dollar, about a dollar a month per bill or something, uh, for the rate payers. Uh, and it ends up providing enough money, fifty-five to sixty thousand a year to support the work of, of Good Energy in this. Also, it can provide some money to pay for the sustainability coordinator for the town.
Correct. So, so there are two adders. Uh, I think there, the number I've seen in the examples is a tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour. So, and I think Pete, you're right, the, the total, you know, if you were to look at our consumption here with the projected participation in this program, uh, Good Energy had estimated it might be, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, some of which would go toward just running the program that we have. But we did in fact talk about being able to use that as a, as a partial contribution to paying the compensation for a sustainability coordinator. DPU, the comments that DPU has had to our plan and to the feedback around this would suggest to me that what DPU is concerned about is that they don't want the adders to become, to be seen as a revenue generation opportunity for a town to then grab money, you know, collect money through the adder, which they then divert, I could, you know, they then divert off into some other energy initiatives they might have. So DPU is trying really hard, as far as they can tell, to make sure that if money is collected from people that are participating in the program, that the money that's collected will be used specifically for the Community Choice Aggregation Program. And so the dilemma or the challenge is how do you make sure that the money that you collect from an adder, let's say if it goes to a sustainability coordinator, we're gonna have to be able to demonstrate that that money is paying for the time that the sustainability coordinator is working in support of the Community Choice Aggregation Program.
Right.
We can't just say, hey, I think, you know, why don't we triple the adder and then we can pay for the whole thing for the whole town. You won't, we won't be able to do that.
Right.
Um, I started off personally skeptical of adders, cause I didn't know what the adders were gonna be used for. I, from what the conversations that I've had, yeah, it's a small amount. So as I said, it's like a tenth of a, tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour. Uh, but I have become convinced through a couple of conversations that I've had that that is money that would be well spent. It's not a major, it's not gonna raise rates. Yet we still have the standard of trying to save people money if they, they wanna go to that default assist option anyway. Uh, but it's not like it's a punitive surcharge. It's, it's a modest amount that can in fact generate some money in the aggregate that could help us out. So.
What you just said probably bears repeating that the, part of the reason for doing this i- is that it actually does save the residents money usually on their electric bills.
Or, or they at least consciously decide they want to spend more than they might otherwise spend at just Eversource Basic. But they'll know that they're getting, you know, that they're basically tapping a higher level of renewable energy in the, in the electricity that they're paying for.
Okay.
See other, just as an aside on that, the other thing that I found interesting, uh, my, my knowledge of economics is somewhat limited, but, uh, one of the things, the class one as recs that we're talking about here have to be sourced from the Northeast and interestingly, including Quebec. Uh, and my view was, listen, the best sun is down in the Southwest. Why aren't we, why are we punishing the Southwest? Uh, and, and so I asked Patrick from Good Energy that the other day and he, he, he brought the one thing I could think of. He, he kinda confirmed it, that the way this works is you have all the energy goes into the pool. So it's not like the solar panel that's out in Western Massachusetts that generates a hundred kilowatt hours of power comes through some sort of a fiber optic tube and shows up at your house. It all is just a matter of managing the mix. And then it's all electricity once it goes into the pot. He pointed out that when you get your electricity from somewhere like the Southwest, it's not just the cost of generating that electricity, but the transportation cost, you know, getting that electricity from the Southwest here in, in the Northeast is an exp, is, is a costly proposition. So, uh, it's not just a matter of what the generation cost is, but when you have to take in the, into account the transmission cost, there is some logic for why we would be looking to have generation capability here in the Sou, in the Northeast, even though the sun shines more in the Southeast, Southwest.
Okay.
Other questions?
No. Thank you.
That's it. More to come when.
Nope, that was a good update.
Okay.
Thank you, Gus.
Yep.
Uh, action items then. Vote, uh, first one is vote to open town meeting warrant, which will remain open until January nine. Do we have a motion on that then?
Any comments? Are we good with that?
Oh, well, okay, go ahead.
You know, just checking, I looked at Christine. Are we good with any?
Oh, yeah, I need, yeah.
Looked up and he read that. I was like, oh, is there something?
No, I just, I, I was just having a moment. I can't believe we're here again already. But yeah, no, I'm over it.
So motion to vote the town meeting warrant, which will remain open until January ninth.
Maybe we should debate whether we should have a town meeting. Cause you're, uh, second.
All those in favor? Aye, aye. Uh, next item is boards and committees appoint Nick Witheren, Weatherston and Tom Urb as keepers of the town clock, accept resignation of Melissa Coughlin from the Board of Health. And I just had a question on the, uh, keepers of the town clock. I thought there was a, a, another person who had volunteered to be like a, an assistant originally.
Uh, I will check. I did not.
There were, well, there were two and I saw two here and I assumed it was the two of them. They'd worked out a compromise where they felt be involved, but I don't remember.
I didn't think it was Nick that was the second one.
Yeah. Oh, no, Nick was on the original email a while ago.
Oh, was he? Okay. All right.
All right. So motion to boards and committees to appoint Nick Weatherston and Thomas Urb as keepers of the town clock. Um, and to accept the resignation of Melissa Coughlin from the Board of Health.
Uh, second.
All in favor? Aye, aye.
If I could, two, two points. Now, I would just make the observation, this is the first volunteer letter I've ever seen where both volunteer, rather than two volunteers coming in and we decide, both volunteers put their name on the same letter, which would give us good reason to think they were planning to collaborate. And then, uh, second is with Melissa's departure. Given, uh, given the people that have been on the Board of Health who came in at a very important time for this town without us knowing how important it was gonna be. Uh, she's one of those people that's seen us through a challenging time with the COVID pandemic. So in particular, uh, well, I realize everybody has to move on at some point. Uh, particularly appreciate her service during, during the time she was here.
You, you're right. She did come at a very, uh, auspicious time.
Little did she know. No, she was incredibly helpful to me as we worked through that. Um, you know, at the time, we didn't even have a public health nurse. So having her nursing, uh, background on the board was tremendously helpful. Um, I did attend the last Board of Health meeting when Melissa resigned and I got the indication, but I will wait for the formal email. We have an associate member on the Board of Health, uh, who's been serving for several years. So, uh, all indications point to the fact that they would, uh, recommend that the associate member be a full member. Um, but I will, uh, begin to advertise for associate members and we'll do that at the next meeting.
Great.
Good, good. Item eight, our next item is vote to sign proclamation recognizing Fred Davis for his service on the Medfield Energy Committee.
So I, I, I just wanna apologize. It actually should not read vote to sign. I, I inadvertently put that on there. This is actually, um, a proclamation or resolution that was signed and voted on by the Medfield Energy Committees. And they were not asking you to sign on to it. They were just asking, uh, I believe for your recognition that it had been created. And it's my understanding, Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, they are publishing that in the hometown weekly as well.
Good.
They are, they are. I thought that they, I thought that they had, were asking the select board to sign on to it as well, but I.
Uh, not my discussions with the chair today, that, uh, it was just that you were presenting it.
But we support it, which is good. We did, nothing wrong with that.
Uh.
All right.
But they had, they had signed it and they had voted that as their resolution.
Good.
All right.
Okay.
So shall we read a copy of that then?
Uh, if you, do you need a copy of that?
Uh, resolution for Fred Davis, and this is as written by the, uh, Medfield Energy Committee. Whereas Fred Davis has given generously of his time as a member of the town's, of Medfield's Energy Committee since its inception in two thousand eight. Whereas during his tenure, Fred has served as a dedicated committee member as well as chair of the Medfield Energy Committee for three years. Whereas Fred is an experienced energy expert, bringing his thirty years of professional experience in the energy sector to the town. Whereas Fred has, was, Fred always was extremely knowledgeable and thoughtful about climate energy issues. Whereas Fred actively networks and educates himself both to stay current and to broaden his understanding of climate and energy issues. Whereas Fred has been a pioneer in the energy efficiency industry, helping to reduce energy costs and GHG greenhouse gas emissions. All kinds of acronyms at the Energy Committee. Um, whereas Fred and his company are well-known for expertise and quality in lighting. Whereas Fred has continued to stay on the leading edge, advancing and advocating carbon reduction strategies. Whereas Fred is a good, tough and powerful advocate for the ways and needed things to resolve climate and energy issues. Whereas Fred is a passionate visionary who leads by example. Whereas Fred estimates that the energy, Medfield Energy Committee has saved the town of Medfield over nine million dollars. And he was responsible for affecting much of that savings. Whereas Fred, during his chairmanship, recognized the need for the Energy Committee to bring its expertise and perspective to the school building committee for the new elementary school project. This resulted in the establishment of a sustainability committee and eventually eventual plans for a net zero school. Guided MEC, Medfield Energy Committee members to train with the MAPC, Massachusetts Area Planning Council, and generate the first baseline Medfield Municipal Greenhouse Gas Inventory. Explored low carbon solutions for the Medfield State Hospital development. Recognized the need for specialist consultants and introduced them to the town with continued benefit to the town. Led the town's adoption of the Medfield Net Zero 2050 Resolution. Oversaw the development of the town's first climate action plan, TOMCAP. Inspired and supported the town's adoption of community choice aggregation. Initiated the MEC's annual presence at Medfield Day. Began the partnership with Sustainable Medfield to amplify. To, it should probably say to amplify the MEC's community outreach. Started the partnership with Medfield Environmental Action, MEA. And who's, with whose support, he produced and hosted several community education, educational and decarbonizer webinars. Whereas Fred repeatedly attracted and guided new MEC members who brought energy and climate expertise to the committee. Whereas Fred is a driving force behind the town's, town's thoughtful adoption of solar installations, including the wastewater treatment solar field and the town garage roof. Whereas Fred led the town's transition from incandescent streets to LED, light emitting diode lights. Whereas Fred was instrumental in transforming Medfield to become a green community. Whereas Fred has kept track of and quantified the financial and carbon benefits to the town of Medfield Energy Committee recommended projects. Whereas Fred engaged in tracking the uptake of climate-friendly technologies by residents. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Medfield Energy Committee, by action of the committee on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, adopts this resolution of appreciation for the outstanding contributions rendered by Fred Davis. Nice resolution. He's a worker. He is. And Fred, Fred had, was, on that point, he has other commitments tonight, so he couldn't be here. Next item, number nine, vote to sign proclamation for Arbor Day tree planting at Vine Lake Cemetery.
So we have planted a tree at the cemetery in honor of our annual Arbor Day. We have just been unable to get all of us in the same spot to have our proclamation read out loud. So we are working on that. It'll most likely be the first week of December. The tree is lovely.
What kind of tree is it?
I don't remember. Lovely. It's green.
A big one, green, big green, lot of branches.
Tree.
Not a grapefruit tree.
So, well, is it, you gotta, is it an evergreen or is it not?
It's been evergreen.
It's not an evergreen.
That's not, so it'll be there when we get there, okay?
Yes, yes. Most likely the first of December. We'll be in touch to coordinate who's going to draw the short straw to stand outside and read the proclamation in the cold. I'll let you know.
I'm having surgery, so I'll.
I'll be in touch with the two of you.
Maybe the cemetery caretakers can put ornaments on it or something.
We may have to decorate it, yes. But if you can vote to sign the proclamation, we'll have it prepared for that day.
Absolutely. Do we have the motion on that?
Motion to sign proclamation for Arbor Day tree planting at Vine Lake Cemetery.
Second.
All in favor? Aye aye. Next item, number 10, request from Medfield TV to sign letter of, letter to Verizon New England requesting an HDPEG access channel for Medfield cable subscribers.
So this was one of the requests that we had in the most recently signed Verizon contract. They had agreed to do it, but we have to submit the formal letter actually requesting the channel.
That was one of the set of meeting minutes that we just actually went through, yes. So I will motion that, we, do, does that need to be motioned? Are we good?
No, I need a motion to authorize the chair to sign the letter.
Okay, perfect. So, uh, motion to approve the chair to sign the Medfield TV letter to Verizon New England requesting an HDPEG access channel for Medfield cable subscribers.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye aye. Number 11, discussion and vote to confirm weights and measures rates.
I'm actually going to hold this until November 28th. Unfortunately, I realized today that I had not sent that in your packet, so I will hold that till the next meeting.
Number 12, vote to award construction bid for Hinckley Playground to Childscape.
Good? I'm good with that. I read it.
Yeah, you're good. Uh, we only had one bidder. Um, we had approximately nine bidders take out specifications. Only two attended the walkthrough, and then there was one bid response. And the amount of this contract is 307,924. And this is for the installation of the playground equipment and the installation of the ADA-approved poured-in rubber surfacing.
The Hinckley helpers are good with it, so that's the most important.
Yes, yep, and they were actually here for the bid opening, which was great.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah.
So vote to award construction.
Oh, I think.
So the only, the only question I had around this, well, first one was the one you just asked, but is this the, are we, when we are, is our approval, we're just?
You're just awarding the bid, and then we'll do the contract.
So there's no, okay, so that's why I was sitting there going, this, this can't be the contract. There's no signature block anyway. So this is just us.
This is just awarding the bid.
And then the contract.
And then we'll do the contracts.
Okay, then I don't have any more questions.
All right. Pete, before our motion.
I'm fine, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, motion to award contract bid for Hinckley Playground to Childscape.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye aye. Number 13, vote to confirm wetland protection fund authorization to pay interim conservation agent $7,158 for July 2023.
So the Conservation Commission, any funds that are to be spent from the Wetland Protection Fund need both the approval and a vote of the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen, Select Board. Conservation Commission voted at their last meeting, and now it just needs a, a second vote by you.
Okay. Are we good? Can I motion? Okay. Motion to confirm Wetland Protection Fund authorization to pay interim conservation agent $7,158 for July 2023.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye aye. So are we going to be getting one of these then every month? Chris, is that how that's going to work?
No, because this actually, uh, this expends everything that's in the Wetland Preservation Fund currently. So that fund is replenished when we have filing fees from Conservation Commission applications. So we are working out an alternative for funding the conservation agent.
All right, good.
Yeah, as you know, when we hired the conservation agent, this is a contract employee. We anticipated this to be a short-term arrangement while we were seeking a conservation agent, and we have, after numerous attempts, have not been able to hire somebody on a part-time basis.
They have it on good authority. He is excellent.
He is fantastic, but I can't afford him, so, um, yeah.
There's someone else in his firm who is less than a third the price, I think, so there are ways.
Yes, we're working on a, on a couple of different arrangements to, until we can hire somebody on a, on a part-time basis.
Uh, number 14, vote to accept medics to renewal rates from MIIIA Health Mia Health Benefits Trust from 1124 to 123124, so for the calendar year 24.
So my only question there, it says, please return signed renewals confirmation no later than 11123. I assume there's no administrative consequences of us being two weeks late?
No, in fact, I'm meeting with them tomorrow, and they're expecting me to have it ready for them when they show up.
Great.
You good?
Yep.
All right, motion to accept medics to renewal rates from MIIIA Health Benefits Trust for calendar year 2024.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye aye. And it was nice to see that the rates are in the more reasonable range of five to six percent than, I mean, there were times when all the health insurance rates were going up double digits.
Yes, and this is actually for the retirees, this is the first rate increase we've had in three years, so.
Yeah.
The rates had, had stayed at zero.
Number 15, vote to approve $4,858.82 in spending from the municipal building stabilization emergency reserve for necessary repair at the Medfield Library.
Yes, this was a sprinkler, a fire sprinkler system leak in the water pressure system that we discovered. So needs to be repaired immediately.
So what we saw in the packet is just information, like an invoice.
Yeah, that was just the quote on the, on the 4,858. Gotcha.
It didn't tell us in the materials what building it was, but I was guessing it was the library.
It's the library.
Any questions, Gus?
Nope.
Do we have a motion then?
We have a motion to approve $4,852.82 in spending from the municipal building stabilization emergency reserve for necessary repairs at the Medfield Library.
Minor correction, $4,858.82.
They say 52, yeah, sorry. Soon as I said that, I think, I flipped my numbers wrong.
So fourth, second, the motion, 4,858.
And 52 cents.
Eight, eight, eighty-two cents.
The minutes will reflect the correct amount.
For the record, 4,000. 4,858 dollars and 82 cents. Second.
All in favor? Aye aye. Uh, number 16, vote to approve agreement with Liturgical Publications, Inc. for the Council on Aging's monthly newsletter. I was just fascinated that some church publishing company is getting the contract for the Council on Aging.
Yes, oh, they do several other Council on Agings in our area, including Franklin.
It made sense when I thought about it, but.
Yeah.
No, it's good. Are, you good?
That was, well, two observations. One, it was 850 copies, which I guess is some measure of more or less the circulation plus some extra copies. I just thought that number was interesting in how many people. I know I get a copy, but it's like, it's 850 of them a month. That's pretty good. And then it also, if I read that right, basically COA doesn't pay for this. What they do is the sponsorship things that are in the newsletter are basically the money that's used. Whenever you read this, it say, oh, if you give us the money, it helps to pay for the newsletter, but I never fully appreciated how direct that help was in terms of the money that's raised is what goes directly to the publisher, as long as they keep 24, 24 sponsors. And they didn't say how much the sponsors had to pay. So it must be standard rate, I guess, is the standard rate.
There was one, uh, COA member who, who basically did the, sold all the advertising to create the sponsorship for it, and it's just carried on, and I don't remember who that was. Do you remember who that was?
I don't remember who it was.
Was it the man from Medfield TV who has the?
Might have been. I'm not sure.
The bench over by the pond?
Right.
Uh, all right, any more questions?
Nope, we're good.
Nope.
We need a motion. To approve the agreement with Liturgical Publications, Inc. for the Council on Aging's monthly newsletter.
Second.
All in favor? Aye aye. Number 17, vote to approve the annual landfill monitoring contract with Environmental Partners, Inc. for $43,600.
I had a quick question on this. Is this, it stuck in my mind that we've approved, did, did we have a co- I mean, Environmental Partners has a couple of contracts with us, so I know that, but for some reason, it stuck in my mind that we had a conversation about the landfill monitoring. I would have said last June or something, somewhere, you know, less than six months ago. Maybe we didn't. It's just in my head.
I have to go back and look.
You know, so this is.
This is just their annual.
This is the annual, and it's, there were, there were no curveballs. And then the other, the other question I had, I think I kind of figured it out when I read the document, was the purpose of this monitoring is just simply us complying with the state requirements. It's not actually a monitoring that says, well, when you finally get to these readings, then all of a sudden you're, you can close landfill legally or any, there's no, there's no endpoint other than that the state makes a decision of whether we need to keep monitoring. And so far, the state is making the decision that we need to keep monitoring.
Correct, and we're monitoring it as if it is closed. We do not have an agreement with the state that it is closed.
So this would be, this, this monitoring would happen no matter what. If it was closed, we'd still be doing this.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good.
So Mike, that was sort of my question too, and my, my angle was if we did the, the next step of figuring out what it is to formally close it, whether we could avoid this annual fee, but it sounds like we can't.
No, we can't do that, but we are in, we've had meetings with our environmental attorney, our environmental engineers, and we're walking the site next week with our, with Susan McPhee and a couple of solar companies to start talking about.
Lot of money for putting up solar on that side of it.
So we're trying to work with Mast EP to consider the landfill closed. We consider it closed. We just need them to consider it closed.
Yeah, and landfills are one of the few places that you can put the solar, because they just put them on concrete pads so that they don't disturb the, you can't build anything else on the, on the cover.
Okay.
So do we have a motion then, Eileen?
There'd be a motion to approve the annual landfill monitoring contract with Environmental Partners, Inc. for 43,600. See how much easier that is? Forty-three.
Forty-three.
Six hundred, it's so much easier. You're just going to round them all up. She didn't pay attention going forward.
I was watching closely, though.
The next one will get me, right?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 18, request for $5,849.82 to challenge Eileen for the light towers and barriers for the holiday stroll.
Are we good?
Any questions?
Yeah, good.
All right, request for $5,849.82 for the light towers and barriers for the holiday stroll.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye aye. Water-filled barriers, apparently.
They're delivered empty, and they go away empty, if you watch, if you watch, apparently, we fill them up with the water, which was sort of interesting.
All right.
Hope it doesn't get so cold the water freezes.
Yes.
Just not go there.
I'm sure that they plan on that, around that. Number 19, vote to approve letter of support for the Bell Forge Art Center's application to the Cultural Facilities Fund Capital Grant Program. And this is because they have some issues with water leakage at the infirmary.
Are you good?
Yeah, I noticed Pete's the only one who has to sign this one, so it's just a single one, but I'm good.
All right, so this is vote to approve that the chair signs the letter of support for the Bell Forge Art Center application to the Cultural Facilities Fund Capital Grant Plans Program.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye aye. All right, so it's seven o'clock.
Yes, it is.
Is everybody here that's coming on the school building discussion? Can we start?
Sure. So everybody hand out guys.
They have to open a meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause they, cause they have.
Yeah, we, we may just need to call and order.
I would think so, right?
So moved.
Second.
Aye, and we'll call to my, here, Leo Brown here.
Michelle Kirkby here, Kristen Sinne here.
And the school building committees, you open your meeting, did it?
Sure.
I'll open a committee, uh, school building committee, right, and we'll, well, Mike Weber here.
Carol Casey.
Peter James.
Bill Warner.
Meredith Chamberlain.
Paul Me.
Kristen Sinne.
Michelle Kirkby.
Great. Can I miss somebody? And Pete? Oh, thank you.
Thinking of myself.
Good.
So the school bill here? Where did you guys put it?
TBD. All right, so I just put together some quick notes. Hi, I'm Mike Weber, co-chair of the School Building Committee. So, um, by the bylaw passed at the last town meeting, or two town meetings, there's actually at this point, the school building committee has been formed, uh, last February. What the handout that I presented to you guys here is just really the highlights of what we've been doing to date. Per that bylaw that was passed at town meeting, it's incumbent upon us to, you know, update you in the school committee every six months on kind of our progress, or at least what we've done to date. And also, we thought as a school building committee, it'd probably be a good forum to have a quick discussion on kind of where we're heading next and kind of lobby some questions back and forth on basically the school itself and the, and the project. And so we'll go from there. So, and funny, like, we've had 12 full committee meetings to date. We formed this communication subcommittee that they've also met 11 times to date as well. We have a webpage up and running. On the handout, there's a QR link to it as well, but it's also on the, um, Medfield Public Schools website, and it's titled, um, Medfield School Project 2023. We've kind of gone through not all, but some of the parts of the last SBC's work to date and had some discussions around, um, you know, land available options, location of a new school, things of that nature. We've partnered with the school committee, yourselves, the select board, as well as the school administration. We submitted a new, um, statement of interest to the MSBA. That MSBA, as a side note, you know, we'll have a decision from them, um, December 13th or 14th, I believe it is, on whether we're into the program or not. We've sought input from the warrant committee. Steve Callahan did a wonderful presentation for us on cost of a new school. Again, referencing the website, um, April 27th was that meeting. So if you haven't seen it, I really implore you to take a look at the, at the slide deck he put together for us. It was very insightful. We did receive at the last town meeting, um, funding to support the SBC with the, you know, hopes of starting a feasibility study in the near future. We have not spent any of those funds to date, with the exception of some minor handouts, I think, and things like that. But generally, you know, we're, we're really waiting until December to find out kind of which direction we pivot to. We did generate, the communications subcommittee did a great job of developing a survey that we were able to get out to, to the community. We got 1,112 respondents in that survey in regards to the old school project, as well as moving forward, kind of what to do. Again, all that's posted on the website. Some really good things there, but generally, the most important responses I think we received were, you know, what's most important to the committee is really to the community, um, moving forward. And, and those were based around educational programming, costs, location, and MSBA funding, which personally, I kind of lump into cost as well. Lots, um, the majority of us visited a neighboring school in Foxborough. Robert Worth, who's a, a member of our committee, is a principal there, and they, they had a new, um, his school itself was part of the MSBA three years, how many years ago was it? Regardless, it's a relatively new school. We were able to view that and kind of get an idea of what a new school is.
And did you say it's his school?
He's the principal. Yep. We did host a booth at Medfield Day, um, which was, albeit rainy and cold a little bit. But it was kind of our way of introducing ourselves again to the community and say, hey, we're here. You know, get on our website, come to our meetings. Um, you know, we're really trying to be proactive. And then our last meeting, we had a, a nice presentation from Dr. Marsman and Principal Grenham. Again, that's on the website as well, but they discussed how, you know, the design of a building can help with the, with their educational programming. And conversely, how the existing school itself is, um, you know, adversely affects the students and the staff and the educational program that's going on. So we've had some really, two really good presentations. We've had 12 meetings to date, um, but we. But we kind of keep talking about December and the MSBA's decision. So, you know, upcoming, things that, that are upcoming. We've formalized to have a regularly scheduled meeting, as opposed to kind of picking, you know, dates that work around us, so we're gonna meet the first Wednesday or every month moving forward. Now, with multiple reasons with Medfield TV, but also to kind of get it on a schedule for community members, because we do want involvement. And we're preparing for that response, like I said, in December. And, you know, in forthcoming, you know, once December fourteenth and we have a decision from MSBA, we really need to rally together because we have two options. We're in the program or we're not. And if we are, we need to make a decision if we're gonna, you know, start a feasibility study, which would be, you know, paid for by the town. Now, they won't, they won't pay for that anymore because they already paid for one. And move, move ahead with the program, which is, you know, a timely program. It's about a two and a half, three-year process of, you know, getting a school, like, construction to start. But it's a well-documented and it's a, it's a program that works. Or we need to decide if we want to wait. So I guess there's three options. And maybe get into MSBA next year, which is a full calendar year wait. And the third option we have is to move forward, you know, using the committee itself, as well as the community, and, and really move forward with the school. Because, you know, what we've all come to agree on is that we need to do something. And the towns had this on their agenda for twenty-plus years, as far as I can tell. And I've been here fourteen or so, and I've heard it for thirteen since I've been kind of listening in. And it's getting a little old and stagnant about just talking about it. So, you know, I have a couple of questions for the select board and maybe even the school committee itself. Really for the select board to start. So, general thoughts on if we're not invited to the MSBA, what is the feeling of taking on the burden of, of a school? And, you know, the, the costs of it are, 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 are large, no matter how we look at it. And Steve, in, in your, your slide deck, which I looked at again this week, I had some numbers. In general, you can help me correct me if I'm wrong, please. So roughly, the cost of a new school is dependent on educational programming, enrollment, i.e. space, in general, and then other space as well. But generally, and I, and you had some data behind this that I'm not gonna get into, but the cost for a new school was approximately seven hundred to eight hundred dollars gross square foot. And depending on the enrollment size, which varies greatly, roughly four hundred and seventy-five to five hundred and seventy-five students is probably what we're planning on, assuming the school committee agrees it's gonna be a two-grade school. So project cost for that is probably between eighty-four and ninety-five million dollars. That's today's, that's, that's a lie, that's April's interest rate environment. And we're in November now, so I didn't actually do any math to figure out the difference. But I think since April, it's only gone up a, a little bit. Anyways, with the MSBA, so generally, a single-family home in Medfield, using an average of eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars as an, as an average assessed value, that's a general, that's a first-year tax increase of approximately twelve hundred to thirteen hundred and forty-four dollars. Round figures. With MSBA, those, all those costs drop down. Town, town costs in Medfield would be sixty, about sixty-seven million to seventy-five million. And then the tax increase per, per household, based on that same annual assessed value, is nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars to roughly, you know, the range is nine hundred and sixty-eight to one thousand and seventy. So we're talking about, you know, with MSBA, and, and I'm just gonna shoot in the middle, it's about a thousand dollars tax increase for the, for year one. Without MSBA, it's about, you know, call it round figures in the middle, one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, round, round figures. Again, middle, just taking some generalizations here. The difference is about two hundred and seventy-five dollars year one of added increase without MSBA, which is a lot of money aggregated over, you know, twenty-five years of, of, you know, living in town.
Do we comment?
That's a good question, I believe it was based on.
So that, when I did that presentation.
It was, it was before the new, yeah.
Before they increased the reimbursement.
Yeah, thank you for that.
The reimbursement rate has gone from four thirty-two up to five sixty-eight.
Yeah.
And it's, based on the modeling I did, it's, it's like a thirty, thirty-one percent increase. And so it's about four, no, four million dollars.
About the four million dollars. So then.
That's, that's the good news.
So the good news is with MSBA.
So that goes sixty-three to seventy-one. Sixty-seven to seventy.
That's exactly right.
Just, just a reminder that those of us in the room can hear just fine, but the bulk of the people in town aren't here in the room and can only hear you if you use the microphone on the, so thank you for using the microphone, everyone.
I love that you did, don't worry about it. Again, this is, I, I, um, the math is all about, it's rough anyways because MSBA's percentage is all based on the school that's designed. Did you, did you, did you design it exactly to their criteria? The last time we designed a school before the failed vote, you know, we had a larger gym, so we had to pay for some of that. So, again, the numbers that I'm talking about today are very general. But again, I'm, I'm really trying to gauge the interest of the room here at, with MSBA or without, do we move forward? Because candidly, we'll know, you know, in a month's time, exactly where we stand. And personally, and again, this is not speaking for the, for the board here, or for the committee, I'm sorry. You know, I'd love some input on that because, candidly, as the executive branch of the, of the, of the school, I mean, of the town, you know, we either, we're not gonna move forward without a school without support. Conversely, we'll do some things to, to help you make a decision in the future. But, which I think is incumbent on us, is, you know, look back at old feasibility studies, things that we can reuse, we do have some funds set aside to hire some experts as consultants to, you know, kind of dig into, again, analyze the data that we have to date, as well as create some new data to really help us move forward. Leo, you have a question?
Will there any numbers run, oh, sorry. Will there any numbers run on the renovation of the existing building? Because that was one of the options.
No, there's been no numbers run whatsoever. And I've got some emails from the town in regards to that as well, and I appreciate the ask, I really do.
It was covered before, that's why I was gonna say to compare apples to apples, yeah.
No, there has not been, the experts that we had analyzed the school prior, there is some reusable space in the school as far as structure-wise, but, you know, full-on mechanicals, full-on windows, full-on roofs, everything needs to be redone. I'm not saying that some of it can't be reused, but there's been no numbers, there's been no consultants. You know, we've started meeting in February as a group in regards to the school building committee. But we have not hired any consultants to do that analyzation for us. We are prepared to, and that's fine, but the reality is, is we need a couple of things from the school committee, for instance. Is this going to be a two-grade school? We really wanted to know MSBA's decision on the town getting accepted or not. Because that's a big, I mean, there's a lot of money there, right? So, when, if we get into the, into the program, you know, we talk to you again, we say, hey, do we wanna do this? As a committee, I think I'll speak for the majority of us, or all of us, that yes, we do.
With the increase, I think, you're, you're not wrong there. I think with the increase, considering what the grade configuration looks like, would be an opportunity to look at that even more closely with the increase of the reimbursement, if in fact, they would accept us again.
Sure.
So, Gus, do you wanna start off responding to Mike's question?
Sure. Yeah, I guess I got a lot of, a lot of thoughts. I, the thing that's been foremost on my mind, and you've already called it out, Mike, is we, we're on our second year of waiting for MSBA to tell us whether we're in or not. And that's probably not an unreasonable amount of time to be willing to let the line stay in the water to see if there's a fish out there that's gonna bite on the hook. But the, but the decision that we will all have, but particularly the building committee will have in a month, or a little, in a month. I can picture one thing that says we're invited in, and then things get a little simpler about how to, where we wanna go, I think. It doesn't mean it's easy, but at least.
Sure.
We know where we're going. It's better than looking at a fork in the road that says, well, either you build this school, that's the MSBA-supported school, or we're building a school that the town can support on its own. So I'm particularly tuned into that as, you know, that, what you just said was, well, if we don't get picked up, what do we do? And as, if I recall correctly, I think the Dale Street, the last project took something like five extra years because we were staying on the merry, the merry-go-round, hoping to grab the brass ring, and it just took five years before we grabbed it. And it feels to me like that's probably not a good strategy. And we're already two years into that, five, you know, I'm using five years.
Yeah, I forget.
So that's, that's one issue. Second point for me is, regardless of all of that, when we were looking at the, at the last project, I'm the, I was the curmudgeon who said, well, what can we afford? And we, and I put a stake in the ground and was happy to have somebody else make an argument for a different stake, but nobody did, it was just, we never talked about what we could afford. My concern this time around, Steve's heard this from me already. My concern this time around is actually not specifically that. Because of the, the growth that you're talking about, this is, you know, we're already into crazy work, crazy numbers. Perhaps even if we really take a tough look at it, it's not gonna be a cheap school. My concern this time around is on taxpayer impact. I would just, off the top of my head, say, I don't think a thousand-dollar increase in taxes is a good answer. I don't think that's a feasible answer because we already are seen as a, as a town that's one of the most expensive towns around. And what I'm looking at is a little different than anything you'd be concerned about. We have this, we have the pressure coming from the state on housing. First and forty-B potentially with the MBTA communities. And even without the MBTA communities, if the hospital project goes, we'll be at something like seventeen percent forty-B, call it, you know, affordable. They won't all be fortyBs, but we'll get credit for it, and we'll be at seventeen percent. When we build that kind of housing in town, we are not bringing people in who are paying the average amount of real estate taxes. They are below, in fact, they wanna come because we have this wonderful school system. And what happens over time is more and more people like that, quite understandably, wanna come to take advantage of a school system that an ever smaller percentage of people in town are affluent enough to pay for. And so I, I'm picturing in a strategic timeframe, there's a trend here that's gonna put us into a real bind about having people in town who actually can afford the real estate taxes required to preserve a top-notch school system. At the same time, the state's programs are all moving in, trying to get people who are in the lower half of that. It's a good thing, I understand, it's good for people, but the thing is financially, I don't see that holding together very well in the long run. And by the way, that will also have an impact on real estate prices in the town as, as, as things start going downhill. So I'm worried about the impact on taxes. I'm worried about how we're gonna make, hold this whole thing together. For me right now, that says I'm primarily worried about the impact on the taxpayer of whatever this thing costs. I'm more concerned about the overall impact on taxes of paying for it than I am about the actual number itself.
So I understand that point, and, and to use your example of families coming in here, I mean, the amount of money we're going to spend if we don't do something on just keeping Dale Street in the condition that it's at, which in my opinion is unacceptable, is, is millions of dollars over, over ten years. I mean, I, I can tell you what we spent over the last five years at least, and it's been in the millions of dollars. So I don't disagree with your point on the whole, I understand your thought process. But that said, you know, the school itself, you're not gonna, you're not gonna have this, it's, it's, it's done. It's, it's, it's run its useful life, and the, and the town needs a new school, so.
So Mike, I'm gonna be provocative.
Yeah, yeah.
What I just heard is, the impact's what the impact is, price is what the price is.
Well, that's, that's, that's yes and no, but, yeah, the answer is you're a hundred percent right, it is what it is. And I think, yes, part of, part of what, of what you just said to me is absolutely correct, and I feel that way. But also, if we went on our own, the school itself, I think the numbers that Steve put together are spot on. That said, you can get a lot more creative if you do it on your own. Meaning, meaning cost per square foot can be manipulated down. There are other things that you can do not standing to the MSBA standards. That said, the MSBA standards are such, because classroom sizes need to be so big. And, you know, maybe you've cut off a hundred square foot of, of classroom, or whatever it may be, it all matters in the end of the, in the aggregate, it'll matter on a hundred thousand square foot building, right? Or whatever the number is. But, but yeah, I mean, part of me, in, in what you, what you said back to me, to be provocative, you're, you're spot on. Like, yes, there, there is a point where we've come past, and I went, I was, you know, on the last school committee, and I'm here again. I saw why that failed, I understood it, obviously I voted for it, but that does, that's fine. And, and I think if we, as a committee, do a really good job of engaging this community to explain the need in a manner that is like really dire at this point, then it is what it is, we need to, now, there are other, it is what it is, your taxes will go up because of this, and we need to explain the why. And I think with the community involvement, I think that'd be, I mean, I think there are other ways that we've talked about too in regards to, to, you know, dollars and cents. You know, that some land sales, you know, Trinity's got a million dollars coming to the town in March. There's other, the, the Hinkley Affordable Housing Project will lend, will lend some dollars to Free Cash, I believe, in the coming year. There's, you know, Steve had, had a really, you know, other ideas that towns have used in regards to a tax mitigation stabilization fund that I think, you know, you as the executive branch in the warrant committee's help, obviously, can really help kind of steer us, because you're right, costs are what, you're right, it matters. And generally.
So let me jump on, because.
Yeah, yeah, I say it a lot.
There's a reason I shifted.
Yeah.
And it's to impact, because it's like, okay, you can't, I do think there's some things we can do on cost, but I'm not saying, well, I think we can find.
It's not gonna be free.
I, I don't think we can find the school at a price that we had two years ago. I don't think we'll come up with a design for that school at that price going forward. Impact though, and you've, you've called out one of the things that I thought was pretty innovative on Steve's part that I, I agree, I agree with, but a couple of points. One, in all this time, because we haven't taken out the debt for the school, our town debt has gone down, which from that standpoint says our borrowing capacity against the arbitrary stake I put in the ground, or any other arbitrary stake you wanna put in the ground, has gotten better.
Sure.
Than it was a couple of years ago. So first off, I understand that we have greater capacity now. Number two, the idea of going to thirty-year mortgage-type, you know, even level payment has a big impact on what the front-end payment is, because ordinarily, we've, we finance things and paid it down as a straight percentage in a, in a, in a standard increment down each year so that we get rid of the debt fast. But at this point, if we're building a fifty-year building, I can easily be convinced that a thirty-year mortgage on a fifty-year building.
Sure.
Is a good thing, because by the time we paid that mortgage off, yeah, there's building, renovation or improvements, and they can worry about that, but there's no reason why the Medfield residents thirty years from now shouldn't be paying their fair share on this, on this school. And that's another way to drive it down. And then the thing you just brought up that Steve had mentioned to me is, this'll be, this'll be a hard sell, but it's a, it's a sell I'm personally willing to help with, is the idea that, had the project two years ago passed, we would have been financing it, even if we start right now with the new project, we would have been financing that for two years earlier, and it'll probably really be three years earlier than we actually are, which says that had the first project passed, people would have been putting money into this school for three years. The idea of asking people to approve pre-funding a portion of this, and with the argument that if we passed the last one, you'd already be paying for this. I'm willing to, you know, I don't know whether anybody's gonna listen, but I'm willing to, to make that case or to help make that case, that if we are willing to put some of this upfront before we actually get the project, that will help us whittle that total cost down.
Sure.
And I, I'm on board with us doing that because impact is what I care about. The tax impact is the thing I care about. So I've shifted my thing in terms of what I'm choosing is my number one priority. I've gone to impact, and I think there are some ideas out there that at least can help us if we, if we can act on it in a reasonably timely manner.
Can, you said you put a stake in the ground, can you explain that a little bit more?
I, I learned in past projects that when you start talking cost three months before the, it goes to town meeting, it's all about the children then. So what I did two years before we had our special town meeting, it was, it was a joint school committee. I think Leo, you were there, uh, Tim, I think you were there, I don't, you two weren't. I basically, it was at the library, I said, look, I'm gonna put a stake in the ground. I want, I don't think from an affordability standpoint, we should sign up to finance a school that would increase the total principal of, that we've got in our town debt to a total that's greater than our annual town budget.
Sure.
It was, and I said, this is an arbitrary stake in the ground, somebody wants to make a different argument. And what that, at the time, what that did is I thought it would help us on the assumption that, it came out to about fifty million dollars if you just rounded everything off. And I figured that MB, uh, the MSBA covers about a third of a school, so I thought it would get us to a seventy-five million dollar school. So that was kind of, but I didn't know if it was two or three grades, but that's kind of, I wasn't being really bad. But that was what I did, is I put that stake in the ground. Well, of course, the budget goes up every year, our debt goes down every year, so the capacity with that metric gets bigger and bigger the longer you push it out. The only problem is the cost of school goes up faster.
And interest rates go up higher, you know, exactly.
So I'm not arguing for that one anymore, I've shifted.
Okay, yeah, the, the reason I asked you to explain that is that's how I understood it as well. And I think there needs to be further discussion along those lines, of, of what, what the towns, and specifically, you know, the warrant committee, a- as well as the select board's appetite for debt is. And what that, what that looks like. Because this will be, whether it's done, you know, by this committee, or one in four years, or one, it, this will be the largest project a town's ever done. Whether it be a renovation, whether it be at Dale Street, whether it be, it doesn't matter where it is. Two grades, three grades, doesn't, you know, pick your factors, it's gonna be the largest product we've ever done. Um, it's our final concern.
Like, I, I guess one of the things, too, about this idea of planning, I, when we talk about feasibility, aside from the feasibility study from MSBA, I think one of the things the town should take a serious look at is all the infrastructure that we have. We do have a deferred maintenance plan that is identified needs across the town that has been, you know, you, I'm assuming it's still being used, I'm just guessing it has. But we, all through this time, WELOC isn't getting any younger, you know, behind that and falling in line with whether it's, you know, I think the school, I think the classrooms are a good size, I mean, from what I've seen in there. But it may, it's going to need something, right? And there's other buildings that need something besides the schools, right? And, um.
Which also argues for why you can't afford to put all your chickens in this one basket for this one school, because then you don't have the capacity for anything.
And I think about thinking about it systemically in that, in that matter, how mu- maybe, you know, barring what we've been up against, maybe it's a multi-phase project that encompasses two buildings over, you know, a certain amount of period of time. You know, if it's not MSBA and we are gonna have to go at it ourselves, I think we should think more systemically at the town as a whole, and if we're gonna look at the schools, let's look at the schools as a whole. So that we're not back here ten years from now, talking about WELOC and how the children, the, it's raining on them because WELOC is falling apart, right? Because we're, we're at that same, at that same crossroads. What if we're able to, kind of what happened at the middle and high school, I, I think they were thought of together. Perhaps it's another opportunity, not to throw an extra wrench on.
No, I mean, look, and if we don't get into MSBA, I think all those conversations are really valid. And I think they should need to be had, and I think that that's important to have them. But I think we need to start thinking about them now, and I think I need, I, look, it, um.
Mike, just a question on that, if, if, let's say we don't get in the MSBA in December. And we decide because of that, we don't want to sign up for an indefinite number of years to see if we can. So we decide to build the school on our own, is that, does that effectively also include a decision that not only are we deciding to build a school on our own, but we've crossed the point of no return on ever being able to join the MSBA program?
No.
So we could.
Just for that school.
No, no, oh, no, I'm saying, but in the first year of designing a school for ourselves.
Yeah.
The, the issue would be, you might have already made the location decision, and the, so the MSBA's process that requires looking at options, that might be by the board.
Sure, sure.
Uh, what I'm getting at is if you did a school that was the school we could afford, but if MSBA was coming in, it would partially offset that cost, and maybe we would have to make the school bigger or meet some other standards, but the MSBA funding would more than cover that, then, you know, could we come into compliance kind of after the, the first wicket? Or have you pretty much made a permanent decision, you're doing it on your own?
It's a really good question, and my, my answer is, um, I think the latter, you're on your own, but, um, Jeff, do you know that?
You need the microphone.
Sorry, they want to hear you at home, Jeff.
If we're out of MSBA for this year, and we have to re, um, resubmit, which the, the process would start again in January. One of the things that Mike and I talked about is, do you look at the feasibility study for the next, you know, six to eight months? And really start to do a, a new feasibility study based on what you folks have already paid for? And then can you then take that information and get back in MSBA in December? I think that's what we have to talk to them about, whether or not we'd be able to do that. Right, you can only go so far, exactly.
Steve, can you use the microphone?
You can jump up and pull it, too.
My understanding is that, um, if you decide that, um, you want to go this alone and then jump back in, you hi- and if you hire designers, that's a, that's an issue with the MSBA, because their process requires.
That's correct.
Right.
Requires, you know, weighing in on that decision.
Yeah.
So that's, that's another checkpoint that you have to worry about.
Yeah, there are checkpoints along the way that I believe would come with us to, to basically be out.
Yeah, I, I knew there were.
It's a good question, I, I.
I just wondered whether you could hedge for eight months to a year and still be able to.
No, I, I just happened to be in their session last week at the, at the conference, and they said, you follow our process. You, you start with us, because otherwise, we've ma- we, we might make good or bad decisions, but it's like, it is a very well-structured process. So I, I, I don't think that's an option, that says, let's start and then reevaluate. That, that was the advice they shared with us.
No, I agree with that, Tim, I just think that you can probably look at the data that, that they helped with last time and try to choose what is in that feasibility study that we can use going forward, without officially hiring someone to go forward. I think that you can definitely do that as part of a school building committee and still get back into MSBA.
I, I agree, then the advice they gave, the more readiness, you know, the less moving parts that we have, the greater likelihood of being accepted.
Yeah, but that's at the cost, if, if you don't get accepted this year, Tim, then it's the cost of another year, or maybe another year after that. So that's, you know, the part of this is probably a mindset question for the bill, for the building committee, you know, what, if, what are we thinking in our head? Are we actually truly designing the school that we're gonna fund on our own? Or are we kind of going through the motions on that, because we're really hoping the MSBA will come? And if, you know, Jeff, to your point, if, if in fact, there's a way we might actually be able to go down that path for even another year without hitting the point of no return, but actually doing something worthwhile. Uh, you know, I would be happy to play for flexibility for an additional year if we needed to. But on the other hand, I recognize, I don't think you just sit there and go, no, we're just gonna wait till the MSBA gets here, because that's not doing anything.
Right, and as Tim said, you know, we couldn't hire any, we can hire consultants on our own to do, um, you know, research on Dale Street and, you know, some structural research, and we could do things outside just for our own knowledge. But the actual, get the process started and, um, there's only so much you can do, and a year's a long time. So, um.
That's all I have.
Yeah, I, I.
Dominating this one, sorry.
No, but your questions are, are, are great, and this is what, this is the discussion I really intended to have tonight. And I'm not saying that we're out, we, you know, we just haven't heard. But that said, you know, I, I do think as a town, we need to really analyze, uh, and, and again, especially in a month from now, like, what are we going to do? Because we have some money set aside for feasibility study, and it's not all that we need. We can't hire, you know, eh, um, an OPM or anybody like that quite yet, we don't have, but that said, we could definitely bridge through town meeting of next year if we needed more funds, but we're at the point now that, um, in, in a month from now, rather, where, we're at that fork, that's all.
Eileen, did you wanna?
Yeah, so Mike, I do have a question regarding, uh, the results that will come through come December.
Yeah.
Standing here right now, what do you think would guide MSBA to a yes? Is it just a pure need of how, how bad Dale Street is? Or, and I'm gonna go back to a conversation I had with, I think it was Jack McCarthy, over, I'd say a year, year and a half ago.
Okay.
And his concern was, i- is the town ready to go forward? And we, and, and, and his comment to me was, Eileen, we as a committee would want to be able to look and see.
Sure.
You're solid, we give it to you, there is no looking back, and there's a chance that there's a no.
Right, yeah, so, um, and Jeff, please jump in, because I know you're more knowledgeable of the process than I am. I'll give a quick answer from what I know and then let him go. So generally speaking, um, the MSBA hates no votes, right? Because that money could have been allocated elsewhere.
Hundred percent.
For a town that would have voted yes, and that's what they want, they want schools to get built.
Yep.
So our no vote obviously is a black eye, you know, in their eyes, on the town itself. Um, and thus, that's exactly the reason why we didn't get in the year before. And, you know, candidly, um, I think we, we kind of had it in our heads on the last committee that if we didn't get in, we told the, the town, it would be a three to five-year wait at a minimum, right? And, and here we are a couple of years later, so, um, I don't know where we stand. That said, we've done a lot of nice things as a town, specifically in the last year and a half to kind of get us, tell them, the MSBA, that we're here, we're ready to build a school, and that's, the committee's formed, we've been, we've met twelve times. What I just outlined to you of what we're doing to date, I think are really positive signs. Um, the money that's been allocated from town meeting to, for our feasibility study, so if we get in in December, we have money to start that right away. Those are really good signs that say, hey, this town, maybe they are ready to build. So to answer your, those are kind of the things that we've done, we're, we're doing our best to prove, like, hey, look, it, we understand what happened, but, you know, we're trying, you know, in this committee, we, we've, we talked about it over and over, we're trying to be, look, it is open, I mean, this is why we're, got a new structure to the meetings, we're, I mean, I, I mentioned the website six times tonight, because I want people to go to it.
Sure.
I, I want engagement, we all want people to, to really, we want to hear your feedback now, what are your, what are the talking points? There's not much to talk about now, of, location, but that was all in the past. Moving forward, we need to make all those decisions again, so I want engagement, we want, we want it to pass. Because we need a new school.
Right.
So, um, without, you know, doing the right thing by the community and, and listening to everybody, not everyone's gonna get what they want. And we're gonna have people who vote no no matter what.
Right.
But that said, um, the general sentiment that I get, um, not just from our committee, but from the people in town, is that this needs to happen, we just need to find a way that makes it, you know, as inexpensive as possible, but also, you know, what, that's also the best long-term solution for the town and the, and the school and the staff and the kids.
And, and the comments that get made about MSBA of, you have a cost, and if you get in, you, again, this is just here saying, if I, so if I speak out of turn, you get, is that there's automatically a bump up in cost, right? And to me, that's the education we need to get back to the community, that there's a savings, but there's a cost. Because you just said it a few moments ago, that if we aren't in with the MSBA, we can start to do things outside of the boundaries.
Sure.
And which, there's, there's good to that, and there's bad to that. And I, and, and when I sit here right now, I think back to the special town meeting, and there was a gentleman that spoke in the, in the gymnasium, and he talked about, like, you know, I, I, I went to a small classroom, there were six of us that, that, you know, you're gonna learn, you're gonna learn. It doesn't have to be shiny lights and new doorknobs and whatever, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And we, so we have that, we have that, that, that population in Medfield that when we start going forward, I don't want to gloss it over that, oh my God, we have to have the latest and the greatest, and has we, it's like timeout. We need, there are certain things that just need to be built, because it's going to be here for another thirty, forty, fifty years. So it's not just building for tomorrow, it's building for many, many years out. And, you know, two plus two is gonna equal four, as long as I'm on the face of the earth, unless somebody tells me something different. So teaching is teaching, but what will, and again, it's all, it's educating back to the community. Why are certain things being stressed?
Yeah, um, I'll take part of your first question in regards to, does it cost more to go through MSBA? And the answer is not really.
Okay.
And I say, that said, you can manipulate the size of your classrooms, you can manipulate anything you want in the school that you're building when it's yours and no one else is paying for it. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So globally, yes, that, that you can build a smaller school. That said, the standards that they've had are tried and true, and they, and they, they've set these standards for every community throughout the Commonwealth for a reason, because they work. And to, to go on a little bit about more what you said in regards to, um, you know, the, the, the person in the gym who said, you know, six of us huddled around a table, uh, I thought the same thing until I got educated on what our educators do these days and, um, and how learning is so much different from even when I was in school, you know, in, in fourth and fifth grade to today. It's, it's vastly different. You know, I didn't change classrooms ever in fourth and fifth grade. You know, we went through a, a daily, Mr. Gremm went through a daily schedule of our, of one of our fourth grade classes, and, and they're changing classrooms, and they have, you know, what I need periods and things of that nature that, that didn't exist when we were in school. So, yes, that person and myself, I learned how to add two plus two as well. But I, I would argue that we do need the greatest, the bit, the bright, the, the shiny lights, at first at least, because it's gonna last for fifty, sixty, seventy years.
And don't please don't take us argue, I think, I think, I think what you just said, Mike, is spot on, that that's the education that, that I want to make sure that we do.
Sure.
That, that there is a different approach, and it's working, right? So it's not like.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, and I don't know, uh, again, I, I've been on the MSBA's websites numerous times, and I've read everything, but, you know, what I've read and how I understand people who've gone through the program and talking to, to Mike and Tim, who were instrumental in the last committee, who work with them on a daily basis, um, you know, in their professional lives, the process is a little bit longer, and there's lots of boxes to check. And, you know, what they pay for is very strict for reasons, because they don't want, they, but it works. And the schools that are built through their process, um, you can, you can, you don't have to select the most expensive cabinetry. You don't have to select, you know, the limestone, you can have cobblestone, you could, all those things are, are your choice still, um, to, to keep costs lower. But that said, like, what they've, as far as square footage is and things of that nature, it works. And, and, and I believe those, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, those change rather regularly, is, is, is that? So, I mean, the requirements for those types of things also change, because they evolve as, as education evolves as well.
And you guys brought up something that I, I had just actually asked Christine earlier tonight, which is, you know, you talk to any designer that, that designs homes, they'll, the, the moment they're done, they'll give you the five things they wish they didn't do, right?
Yeah.
Or the five things that, you know, that, that are trendy today.
Yeah.
Knowing that schools, towns around us have just built new schools, some with MSBA, some without. I would love to get, especially those that were with MSBA, if you got a do-over, what would be the five things that you'd get a chance to?
Yeah, yeah.
Because we all learn, I mean, there's all, like, even our, our public safety building, if you went and asked both chiefs today if they could do things a little differently, they'd say, this is how they would love for the building to have been laid out, or different, so I'm just curious.
Same, Bob.
It, it was a lovely building.
No, it's a really good point, though. You know, and I, I personally didn't get to tour the, the school in Foxborough, but, but even Robert Worth, who's on our committee, would tell you there's certain items of that that he doesn't love, but work, right? So things like that, absolutely, those are things, and, and that's kind of incumbent on, on us as a committee. You know, we've got, um, uh, an invitation to go visit Ashland, Jeff says it at multiple schools, Superintendent Marsden, recently, and yes, those types of things are, that's incumbent on us for sure. As long as, and again, every educational program, and I'm, you know, I'm in construction, right? And, and so I, I don't know it as well as the educators in the room, but what they tell me is the building matters. So not, and not every educational program's the same, right? Similar, sure, because learning has evolved and they all kind of follow similar models, but, um, but similar educational programs should, you know, a new buildings would be designed as such that it would work towards those programs.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, the programming, the programs are what drives a lot of the design, right? And, um, you know, if you're building a house on a lake, you're not gonna put the big windows facing the street, right? And if you're building a new school, and you can use the house model, if we've all seen Harry Potter, right? And they had the different houses, big schools like Cambridge, Virginia Latin have different houses, because they're big. And then, so they're designing the school to house schools within schools. So they have a science lab in each wing, as opposed to a science wing where everyone goes. So each of those types of programs, and that's a very simplistic way of, of approaching it, but, you know, that's the way that the schools are typically designed. And that's where a big difference between early MSBA projects that I worked on, in elementary schools, in the late nineties and early two thousands, vastly changed from, you know, twenty-ten in that area until today, like, when we went through the process. There was so much emphasis put into that program, like, that programming process, um, to drive the design. Because I believe MSBA got burned in the past, and that's why they do have those strict rules. They have, the finger got pointed at them a few times, and they were like, well, we're gonna set some rules, and that's really why, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think, you know, the, the schools that we're used to with, you know, the super-long haul. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think, you know, the, the schools that we're used to with, you know, the super long hallways and the lockers outside and every classroom just, you know, off, um, you don't see too many brand new schools like that. They're similar. Like there, there's hallways and there's classrooms off of them, but, you know, there, there's breakout areas. And there's, you know, individual rooms for, you know, certain neighborhoods to share for, um, you know, um, some of the, uh, students with needs that need, that need a timeout or needs, need some one-on-one attention that doesn't have to be in the corner of the classroom now. Those types of things we didn't grow up with.
Right.
Right? But they're required. They're, they're necessary now. They're, you know, not so much required, but those types of things, um, we just don't have right now.
And I would echo to the, to the six kids around the table, right? That's wonderful because that's a smaller class environment to collaborate. Um, and in order to do that now, when we have class sizes that we're trying to keep under, you know, twenty-three, like where, where's the space for those six kids to break off to go collaborate together, you know? And then if you take our typical Dale Street room, uh, you know, two groups of six maybe, but, but four groups of six ain't going to happen. So, and so having those spaces, like he's talking about, the typical, uh, I was just in a new high sc- a new elementary in Taunton not too long ago. And every four classrooms is in a pod and they have those breakout areas right outside the rooms, uh, to do that collaboration work. With multiple groups could go out, um, and maybe work with a teacher, you know, one-on-six, you know, whatever the case may be. But again, that had to be designed into the building, into that process.
This is all along that same, that same, going back to the, to the person at that gym, like, it's exactly how I learned. It's exactly how the schools I went to, and that's what I thought. Um, but I've learned a lot over the last kind of four or five years about what, what we need. Um, so anyways, um, and, yeah, please, Christine.
What I, I would just say is like, I don't think anybody on this committee or beyond wants to try to build the Taj Mahal.
Right.
Nobody is trying to win any architectural awards. We're not looking for people to come and, and take pictures and say, wow, look at what Medfield did. I think everybody has, we all pay the taxes, right? We're all on the hook for this money, every single person on the committee. So I think that we have to trust one another, that we are going to be conscious about those decisions, thoughtful about them. Not try to over-engineer, that like has to be like a tacit agreement amongst us as a community, because we're all on the hook for this thing. But to your question about the MSBA, the way I think about it is like a DIY project. And I went off on my own and I tried to do it because I tried to save money. And then I inevitably screwed it up because it's not my expertise. I don't know how to do it, right? And so I think about your question and I think, I don't know the, the dollars, but I, I don't know how it couldn't be a savings because of the, what I've seen and heard about other towns who do go it alone and the costs that they have incurred because they didn't know and they didn't get it right and didn't know what they were doing and have that process to follow. So I think there's something to that. I don't know the math to it, but there's, there's a, a value proposition to it, I guess.
Well, I, I look at it as, we might not get in, so then that is our path.
Right.
Then you immediately go to those and say, again, what are your learnings, right? Like I, I'd prefer not to trip and fall if I can ask the guy in front of me why he did.
Right.
So, so, you know, that I have no problem with that. And then I will chime in. I sat in the warrant committee meeting last night. And it's funny, on Medfield Day, I think Steve, you and I might have spoke, or I forget who I, we were talking about, you know, would we set sunny, set money aside early so we'd have it later? And I thought, eh, is a crazy idea. But the more I thought about it and then listening to the dialogue last night, that's not a horrible way to try to soften the blow of the dollars that we're going to have to spend, right? And you said it a few moments ago, Mike, and I, I don't disagree. It's, it's coming at us. Now, what the exact dollar amount's going to be, we don't know. But we know it's going to be more than anyone here wants to really swallow, but it's going to come at us. So the idea, Steve, of what you guys talked about in the warrant committee, I, I, I think that that train of thought in educating the community with, we might start today for something, they might not even see the shovel go in the dirt for three years. We'll, at least trying to get ahead of it. And knowing that the committee that, that's working on this right now, like we said at town meeting a year or two ago, hopefully every person that's partaking in this dialogue sees someone in the audience says, you know, they've got my, they've got my demographic covered, they've got my needs covered, that if we do this, we're doing it in a thoughtful way. And we're doing it in a way that you are being transparent and I do applaud everything you guys are doing right now. It's, no one is being pushed back. Um, and, and as we go forward with this, it, it's as, as a community front and we, we really do try to address what's right out in front of us, which is it's going to be a big bill. So how do we do it best and try to soften the blow, so?
Well, I guess I want, you know, to what Gus was recommending and what yours is falling up on, you know, I, I think the dollar figure had a lot of sticker shock and a lot of impact in the last, you know, um, you know, I think location was, you know, one thing that they used, but I think that was a way to say that this was really expensive. Now, even the lower amount with MSBA is still higher than our price before, unfortunately. So it's gonna, I think we're going to see a similar sticker shock unless we find a way to cushion the blow. And I think that that voting in now, a dollar figure to, whether we even borrow it now still, right? And hold on to it at a lower rate and pay, start paying it down in preparation for that might actually be, or borrow a part of it, might actually be a very, I don't know, a, a, a unique way to.
Something that Gus said though, that I, I know this is a hard number to put on the table. But I think, eh, you know, my corporate life, I just couldn't walk in and just say to my boss, hey, this is what I, this is, I'm going to CES and I, I'm going to build this booth. And he's like, what's the budget? I don't know, whatever the final bill's going to be is my budget.
Yeah.
Just can't do that, right? I mean, you, you, you know, you, you know what you signed off on the year before when you get your budget for whatever you're doing the next year. And you have to work within that. And you don't, especially if your business is starting to cave, you don't get the extra nickel. You probably have to give up the extra nickel. So I think as a community, we have to try to wrap our head around what, based on what the dollars are trying to set aside, based on what we think we really need, you know, what is, what are we really striving for? And it's not, you know, I know it's not going to be the Taj Mahal, but it can't be, and I know there's a lot of pushback, even when we did the public safety building. There was this large number and the question that was asked at one of my meetings, well, did you really have a budget? No, this is what they came back and said they wanted and this is what it was going to be. It's like, no, that, that's not the real world. Real world is you have to, here's your budget, you're going to, anyone buying a home in Medfield, they might love the, the home on Minuteman that's one-seven, but their financier said, you can only afford nine-twenty, that's what it is. So I think, I, I think if we get that signal to the community that this is what we're striving for, and it's still in light number two pencil, because we know we're not going to get it right. But, but at least that's what we're striving for. And it's not going to be, well, whatever they come back and say it's going to be is what we have to pay. It's not how it works.
Yeah, so I, I don't disagree. I, I mean, that's, that's certainly, I mean, the, the, the numbers I kind of rattled off tonight. So again, without MSBA, the, um, depending on enrollment, eighty-four to ninety-five million dollars. Um, and that's based, um, literally on the schools in our area being built currently, right? Um, that's a real number. And I, I love this conversation because what we didn't do well enough last time was have this conversation now. So getting in front of the community and saying, hey, look it, you know, we're going to do everything we can in the next couple of years or whatever it may be to, to mitigate the tax impact. But we got a ninety million dollar bill coming, because that's the reality of what we're facing. So, uh, I, this is fantastic, like forum for us to have it and I, and we're doing it the right way, right? Which didn't happen, uh, as well as it should have last time. And that's partially, like you said, there was a sticker shock, you know, three months before a vote. Yeah, maybe there was. And maybe that was incumbent on us the last time to, you know, if we knew that six months prior, we should have been screaming from the rooftops of what it's going to be. Um, and it wasn't done well enough. But we're doing it today, um, in an interest rate environment that's not as great as it was the last vote we had. Right? Which is very important to recognize as well, because it's not just the cost of the building, it's how much, really how much it's going to cost to borrow. That, that, that's, that's the, that's the expense.
But when you're, the materials and everything were tight. So like, and so you could, there's ways you could say it's good, there's ways you could say it's bad. Because, because the, the, the supply and demand was brutal over the last two years. If, well, you're in construction, as you know. My younger brother builds in South Boston and some of the stuff, he'd write a check for three hundred and thirty thousand, thinking he left an extra hundred on the table. And the guy's like, we need another two fifty. And this is a year and a half ago.
Sure. Yeah, no, the, the, the construction market itself, um, because of the interest rate environment, and I'm in commercial construction for the most part. We do a lot of university work. I mean, there, the end user stuff is going, but, uh, the developers are certainly slowing down. And that's because of the cost of money, candidly. Um, now, what does that mean for somebody who's going to go, you know, build a school? Uh, maybe a general contractor needs some work and it's a little bit more aggressive on that end. But, but the material pricing and labor pricing have gone up and the interest rates have gone up. So the, the, you know, apples for apples, the exact same school is going to be more expensive than it was before. It's just what it is. And candidly, if we wait another two years, it's going to go up again. So, that, that's, that's, I, I implore everyone to take that home because we can push it down the road for a year. And I'll, I'll do whatever the town wants. Um, we can do some, some intermediary work in, in the meantime and digging through feasibility studies. And, you know, um, do our best to get back in with MSBA, which, um, is a sound idea, candidly, because they do hold a lot of funds. Um, but if we go alone, or, or we could choose not to do nothing and just wait, regardless, every year is going to get more expensive, unless MSBA continues to, you know, up their funding and we get into the program and the rates have gone up again, right?
But I. Any, any overruns from the last project, they would have covered, you know? They, they increased, they reversed the rate, included projects that have been approved. So now that we're on a second increase now, and they're going back a year covering those projects that have improved the last year. So it's, uh, you know, it's a, they're, they want to help, you know?
Yeah.
They realize what's going on with costs, so.
So anyways, um, I guess the only, uh, any other thing from our committee or, uh, school committee before I just had another question, just generally? This is really for, you know, going back to, um, trying to get, you know, people involved in, in regards to the community. What are the, what are the suggestions, um, did the select board have for, for our, you know, school building committee? Of like, hey, what else can we do? Um, you know, there's talks of hiring, you know, third party to help with engagement, which is certainly on the table. Um, you know, I'd love to spend the money that's been, um, given to us in the town um, on, you know, real tangible, like, let's get some, you know, surveys done and structural, you know, things that like really we can utilize to, to whether, recognize that we can rebuild a school or modify what's existing, whatever it may be. Um, but that said, you know, there, there's real value in community engagement. And so there's been talk of that. Um, you know, we've got the website, like I've mentioned a do- a dozen times. Um, we did Medfield Day. Um, you know, we're, we're sending out, um, you know, updates for everybody who's signed up, the same agenda stuff that you guys do. I'm just curious, because, you know, that, that's also part of our struggle, right? Um, we've only been at this since February, um, and, you know, even my friends are like, yeah, when's the new school coming? And it's like, oh my God. You know, it's like, it's.
You missed it?
It's maddening. Uh, you know, it's, it's a, it's a struggle, but I, I, we're looking for help too.
So Eileen, do you have any more questions or, or input that you wanted to share with the committee?
Well, I mean, I think to, to answer your question right there, Mike, I think I would highly recommend bare minimum, let's say just once a quarter, that we just get the update. Cause one thing I've found with these meetings is, these meetings get watched. I chuckle when I walk around town and, you know, whether they're watched live right now, whether they're watched on YouTube, whether people are, I actually doing it remotely on their laptop right now, wherever they are in the country, they want to stay in touch. But people will say like, oh yeah, I watched your meeting, blah, blah, blah. And so I think coming in here, and especially it, it is, uh, it's a mix of young that have the time to watch it, younger families. But it's a lot of the, the older residents that are, that are intrigued by this dialogue and what we're doing as a town. So if you, you, you want to come in, and it's not, we don't have to have an hour dialogue, but it's, this is what's happening. Um, open the dialogue if people want to have questions. If it's on the agenda that they're going to come in and they can ask questions, this is going to be as transparent as, as it gets. It's not going to be, and, and, and the last go around, COVID definitely put a damper in, right? So may that never, ever happen again. And people can be face to face, people can sit in the meetings. Any questions we could ask can be right here live and not rapidly trying to type on a keyboard.
Yeah, yeah. That definitely hurt us for sure. I, um, look, we're, we're, it's, you're coming at us to be here at least every six months, but I, I'll come every quarter. That's easy, you know, as far as I'm concerned.
I mean, where the activity is, right?
Yeah.
I think that's the big thing. Is we, in December, we get good news about the MSBA, then you guys are going to huddle post-holiday. And then it's okay, let's come back to the town and, and, you know, let, let's bring everybody up to date. We got the good news, there are the next steps.
And if it's bad news, then I think we meet too.
Yeah. Oh, no, don't get me wrong. I'm just, if MSBA is watching, we're, we're looking for good news, not bad news.
I mean, we, look, we, we need a new school and I, and I think that they, that they recognize that for sure, right? Obviously, the failed vote is, is what really hurts us in their eyes.
Mike, I'm not sure this is the question you, if, if that was the question you were asking, what do you need to do to keep us on board? That was.
No, no, I, I'm more.
I thought you were asking something different.
Yeah, yeah, I am.
Um, and I'll, I'll make a few comments, personal views on this. None of my comments are meant to be criticisms of any, anything that anybody did the last time around.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there are actually comments that come from my own experience. Uh, when I first got elected to the Board of Selectmen, my first committee was the ALS Study Committee, uh, where we were convincing the town to basically throw a lot of money into let the fire department add ALS capability. I ca- I went into that skeptical, it was a good idea. And within a month or two, maybe three months, I was completely turned around based on what I learned in the committee. So I, I, I didn't start in favor of ALS. I actually started skeptical because there was added cost. And then when, fortunately, we had a couple of people on that committee that knew it, they were talking about and they really helped that out. So I became an advocate for it. But for at least six months before that vote, I was responding to emails. We, we had a couple of information sessions that, that we, we brought with people. And my, my brought, my bottom line comment on that is, you can hire communications consultants if you want to help you in crafting things. Uh, and there's a real, and, and it, it can be very helpful if somebody knows how to do that can help. They cannot replace the direct interface you need to have with the public.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's not the insulator that lets you not have to deal with them so you can get to the job of the product.
Yeah, I don't think we're looking for.
And, and, and my real advice there is around all of that in terms of interacting with the public. It's whatever it takes until the sparks and the smoke start to die down a little bit. You don't have to put the fire out all the way, but you have, it, it's going to be whatever it takes. And at any time in this town that we try, anyone tries to cut off that public exchange because of time, or because we've already had this conversation fifteen times. But every time that happens with members of the public, it's a losing proposition. It just flat out is because it takes on a life of its own. So my number one piece of advice would be, as hard as it'll be to figure out how to do this constructively probably, make sure that that, that easy flow of information is maintained throughout. And if there's problems or if there's disagreements on what the right direction is, the key is for the committee to show that it understands what those problems are. And you're still going to have to make a decision.
Yeah.
But being willing to explain that decision may not get everybody happy about the answer. But everybody else that's listening will understand, this is a committee that's really working at trying to figure this out. They listened, they took these things into account. Some of them they could accommodate, some of them they couldn't, but they explained why they couldn't. I think that's huge.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to please everybody, no matter which direction we go in. And that's, and that's, that's going to be the case no matter what happens.
But, but I can tell you for me and that ALS thing, it felt like I was pedaling a bike uphill for six months. Cause you put out one brush fire, you'd have another one. And it's just, but that one passed with the mo- the greatest majority on the overrides that year of any of them. And it was, and it's proven to be a good, I mean, it was, the fact that it proved to be a good thing probably helped, but.
True.
Uh, that would be my number one piece of advice, is don't let that connect directly with the committee and the, in the public.
Yeah.
Don't let that be a burden.
Our subcommittee, uh, for communications has been doing a great job. And that, that was the first thing that was formed. And that's because we, we, you know, Caroline and, and the rest of us had talked about right away, how do we get transparent? How do we make sure we, we're involving, you know, um, send a survey, let's see if we can get some response so we can at least generate dialogue. So, good, thank you.
So I'll start with your last question and then go back to the, the first question that you asked each of us. Uh, on, on the information sharing, I would, I advocate for pushing the information out to people. Uh, don't just put it up on a website. Somehow figure out a way to, to get it to people so that they see it on their social media. So that, I mean, if, if you have an email, uh, uh, sign up so that they can get information from you, you know.
Do, yeah, we've done that for sure.
Push it to them that way. You know, push it to Chris Potts so she can publish it on her site. Uh, if you give it to me, I, you know, fourteen hundred people will see it when I post it on my blog. And then another fourteen hundred or something see it after that through the different channels. Um, so I'm just a big believer in, in pushing the information to the residents and not expecting them to go and find it on the town website.
Okay.
So i- in terms of the Dale Street School, where I come from on this, um, first of all, I, I was actually a select board member when we did the, um, the high school and the middle school. I went to like twenty-five meetings in a year to try to learn how to, why it costs so friggin' much to build schools. And I, and I under, and I came away understanding that it did and, and, and that it wasn't that we were building any Taj Mahals. It's just, it costs that much. Um, um, on the Dale Street School, um, my, my tour of that was led by Bob McGuire and Tim Bonfatty from the school committee. And so that tells you how many years ago it was. Um, and, and even then, you had to, there was no thermostat in the building that worked. You had to, the custodian just had to flick the heat on and off. Tim explained to me that the walls were all, um, um, concrete. and that you can't move them, and that educational philosophy, as you said, Mike, today is that the rooms are bigger. And so that to renovate Dale for, for current use gets very expensive when you're, when you're moving concrete walls. Um, I, my attitude is that we have no choice, I mean, it's very expensive, it's, we're over a barrel on cost, and, 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 but we have a school that is just non-functional, and, and it's gonna get much more expensive to, to keep being not very functional in the future, as you said, Mike, so I, I don't think we have a choice, we just have to do something. I would hope that we can get onto the MSBA list and, and have the state pay for part of it, um, cause that'll certainly and it, make it easier for the, for the residents to, to pay for it. Um, I don't have any problems trying to space out the payment like, uh, like Eileen and Gus have been talking about. I mean, part of what we're doing today is we're paying for the OPEB for the residents that were here thirty years ago and didn't pay for it then, so I mean,
Mm-hmm.
It's just, I have no problems spacing out the payment of the school, uh, for a long time if we can do that, um.
Thanks, Pete, yeah, no, I, and again, I, the MSBA is a good program, uh, from everything I know about it, and it works. And they pay for some of your school, like, so all of the above, right, would work for us, in my opinion. Um, and, but I, I appreciate your comments tonight, I, thanks for having me, I'm happy to come back. Um, I appreciate you guys, anyone else from, from our, you guys?
I just had one final thing for you, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, I, I, I know how much work you guys have done, so I just wanted to thank you for, you and your committee members for everything you've already done, so.
Yeah, you know, I, I think the committee is really well-rounded, and we've got a good group of people, uh, we've got some new members as well, which is great. Um, so I, I appreciate that, and I think, um, again, the, how we were all appointed and came about, uh, we're all coming from this at a little bit of a different angle, which I think is a kinda nice to see as well. Um, so, you know, like I said, I'm very optimistic because that's general in my nature. Um, but I, you know, the costs, you know, going through that survey, and we had a lot of respondents, and, and that's a big number. And everyone's gotta get used to that, I think, and I think collectively, we need to figure out how to mitigate it the best we can. Um, because that, that's, it's an important decision that, that we have.
Unfortunately, it is what it costs, I mean, I think the last time we had to build the school a little bit bigger because the MSBA asked us to, or required us to, um, and so that.
Again, yeah, that was enrollment thing, I think mostly, exactly, so, um, anyways, thanks for your time tonight, I appreciate it, and, uh, again, you guys all have my email if you have any more questions come up.
Is, is there anybody else in, in the room that has questions or comments, or Chris?
Microphone. Leo's got it.
Is it on?
Michael, let us know.
Okay, thanks, um, Chris Potts, Seventh Curve Street. Um, just for, um, if anybody is interested in, in doing a, a very interesting comparison, is to look at the Wellesley School projects that are going on right now, because they have actually two elementary schools, um, on parallel paths. One is through the MSBA and the other one's not through the MSBA. And what's really interesting about that is that, um, the Honeywell School, this is the one that's not through the MSBA, they have a, a pretty set date for February twenty twenty-four, um, occupancy. Their, um, this is based on what they have on their website, so it may not have been updated. Um, but their cost per, per square foot, um, is eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and that's without MSBA. They started their project in August twenty twenty-one. Um, the Hardy School, which is going through the MSBA, they don't really have a hard set date for occupancy, they're looking at maybe fall twenty twenty-four. They started, um, eight months earlier than the other school, and they're at seven hundred and thirty-seven per square foot with MSBA reimbursement factored into that. So I just think it's, it's a really interesting model to look at, if you click through the, the Wellesley, um, project website, you can, you can do a pretty interesting comparison of what going through the MSBA looks like on one school and what it doesn't look like on the other.
Chris, is the Honeywell, the one next to the library in the downtown?
Uh, I.
Bob says yes.
Yeah, is it? Yeah, you, that's right, you used to, you used to work there, yeah.
Bob has some familiarity with Wellesley up here.
So it's just an interesting comparison, because I think that it gives you a good sense of, you know, um, even though the MSBA grant certainly helps, um, it does slow down the process, and, and time is money, so it, and you can ultimately pay more because of that. MSBA, MSBA also in June, um, rolled out more stringent, uh, green schools program that has, um, a lot more stricter mandates in terms of more expensive requirements, um, to meet energy codes. Um, and those are mandates now, so, um, in order to get incentive points.
I was surprised the last time around that the MSBA didn't have a, a net zero model school, but.
Yeah, no, they don't, um, they're still really expensive. Um, net zero isn't, it's there for buildings, um, we've built some, um, the costs for net zero are, um, substantially more than if they're not net zero.
But then you, you save it for, in savings over time.
Over time, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
But I would also say in regards to the energy code, Chris, just as an update, the energy codes, um, have been changing year after year, and those are state codes.
Yep.
Um, and the reason probably that they're requiring them now is because they're building codes now.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, I think they just, they've just adopted, depending on what they design around, twenty twenty, I believe, is kinda what most ones going around now.
They just changed their formulas in terms of how to, how the incentive points are earned. Um, and then the only other thing is, I think the, what, I, I think it was tough for people on the school building committee last time was, you know, they had, when we went through the designer selection process and the project manager selection process, um, the committee had first choices and MSBA overrode. I, I can't, honestly can't remember whether it was a designer or the project manager, but, um, we didn't get our first choice because MSBA overrode that. So it's just another consideration to, to, to keep in mind, we don't really have a hundred percent control over it.
Anybody else with the input, questions? Thank you guys very much then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, yeah.
Better close your meetings.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're on to, uh, our citizen comment section, and we don't have any citizen comment again. Uh, consent agenda, we've got a request to post sign on the corner of North Main Streets and Route twenty-seven South Street from November twenty-seven to December four to advertise the Medfield Foundation Angel Run. Uh, secondly, request to post signs at the usual locations on behalf of the Medfield Lions Christmas Tree Committee advertising the selling of their Christmas trees from November twenty-four to December eight. Request to post signs at the usual locations on behalf of the Medfield Garden Club to advertise the Deck the Halls Home Sale, November eighteen to December two. And a request from the Medfield Music Association to extend their sandwich board posting for the spaghetti and snowballs fundraiser from November fifteen through November twenty-nine, original posting was from November one to November fifteen. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Uh, meeting minutes, are we set to go on those at this?
I'm all set, I, I have approved all of them.
I've done January twenty-fourth, June twentieth, and July eighteenth.
Well, just so you know, August tenth is about thirty seconds, that's when you weren't here?
I get, oh, was it?
That's just we, Pete and I came in to do the liquor license.
If I wasn't there, so you guys can, I, I would have stayed anyway.
Cause that was just the liquor license for, um.
Which one was that, Eileen?
August tenth.
August tenth?
August tenth, okay, so why don't we?
So I'll abstain from that one, the only one that I didn't get to is February seventh. The reason I didn't get to it is because Brittany's email had the June twentieth, July eighteenth, and I looked at it quick, and then what it was is she had a line, and then I didn't realize below that there were more, until I did this inventory and said, where are the rest of them?
I was determined to get that done before I came here today.
So, so the one that I can't is February seventh.
All right, so we'll hold that one and then, uh, do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve the meeting minutes for January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and then Gus will abstain from approving August tenth, twenty twenty-three.
But I'll second the motion.
Okay.
All those in favor, aye, aye.
Aye.
Town administrator updates.
Um, I had the opportunity to attend the Veterans Luncheon, um, last week, and just wanna say huge thank you to Melissa Bingham, our Veteran Services Officer, and Sarah Hanifin, our Council on Aging Director. It's always one of my most favorite events each year, um, lunch was fantastic, just great to, to sit down and talk with everybody. Um, and then just wanna let everybody know we have holiday hours for, uh, the Town Hall. We'll be closing early on Wednesday, November twenty-second at one o'clock, and then we'll be closed on Friday, November twenty-fourth, the day after Thanksgiving.
Okay, uh, we've got meeting dates, uh, in the agenda, if anybody wants to see our upcoming meetings for going through March. Uh, and select board member reports, Gus?
Oh, we've had three weeks since the last meeting, so my list is long. Uh, there, I've already reported, there were a number of community choice aggregation teleconferences, so just, there was a lot of them, and I was on them.
That's good.
Um, I attended the, uh, the Board and Committee Recognition at the Zulu on the October nineteenth, which I thought was a great event, was, it's like, I think that's gonna become an annual event, but I thought that was, uh, well worth it, and probably would be even better if more people either that didn't think they could come, cause they aren't volunteers, but they might be interested, that would be a great place to show up. Uh, attended the MBTA Communities Information Session at Public Safety Building that we were all at on October twenty-sixth, that was a good session. I had lots of questions, as the two of you know. Uh, I had a meeting with Gene Minio, talked about the State Hospital on the twenty-seventh. Attended the Veterans Day Luncheon, that we've already talked about, on the ninth, that was actually a lot of fun. Uh, attended last night's Medfield Historical Society Meeting, which John Thompson was the guest speaker for, and it, it was, I went because he said it was gonna be pre, you know, discussion of, or it was advertised pre-colonial inhabitants of, of the Medfield area, so it was kinda like before the colonists, but he went all the way back to the, what was it, the paleo period, nine thousand years ago, when.
Like, like Medfield?
Yeah, when there was like a miles worth of ice in most of Medfields, but it was, it, so it was more of a ge- yeah, part of it was more geological, but it was pretty interesting and, uh, you know, just how, it's, it's pretty neat, people that understand geology the way that John does is better than I do, and the things they can see, uh, even in the hills that you go down on, uh, on, uh, you know, roads, I, I know going Route Two, when you go through Lexington, you drop down to Boston, that whole thing is a glacial cirque, I think, and it's a big, long hill, and you realize that at one point it was a glacier, it's just cool. Um, on top of all of that, I also attended, and I'm glad he's here to verify this, I also toured Bill Masaro's Halloween display on Halloween, it was every bit as good as it's ever been. And, uh, two weekends ago, I went to the, this is, this is personal stuff, but I'm sure somebody out there is interested, went to the Boston Ski Show. Now, I've been skiing for over forty, probably, I've been skiing for over fifty years now, and I discovered two ski slopes at that ski show I didn't know existed. Le Massif du Sud, which is not the Le Massif, it's the northern one, it's a smaller one, I never knew it existed, and it's there. Uh, so down outside of Quebec, and also a, uh, British Columbia slope called Panorama. Uh, apparently it's on the, uh, uh, not Epic, the other pass. Um, but it's like the third highest vertical, or third greatest vertical in Canada, and it's like, how have I skied all these years and didn't even know the name of that mountain? So anytime I can go to a ski show this far into my skiing career and discover two slopes I didn't know about, that is a good day.
Thank you, Eileen?
All right, like Gus, because we've been away a few weeks, I've got, uh, I've got a bunch of things I've attended and participated in, but I will try to keep it short. Um, so I was asked to join the Medfield Cares About Prevention Leadership Committee, so based on that, I've been involved in, uh, their monthly meetings. Uh, went to their Screenagers Film and Panel that they hosted on November second, which I thought was fantastic. Um, we held an equity training last Monday, um, hosted by a, a third-party group, um, just to talk through some things that we'll be up against as we go through. Um, I know we're trying to, uh, submit for a grant, which, Christine, you probably, or the grant that was, was to give us another six, we did the first five, and now it's sixty-ten.
Another five years.
Um, so all of that, I'm thrilled to be on it, I, I love the committee, I love what we're trying to do there, so that's all good. Um, Veterans Lunch, I got there late, I was actually at the, uh, MS, the Medfield Cares About Prevention Leadership Meeting, so I cut out of that a little early and got to the Veterans Lunch a little bit late, but did get a chance to get caught up with, um, some of the attendees, had a chance to see Sarah, which I hadn't seen her in a little while, and I picked her brain on a few things. Um, I too enjoyed the, uh, Board Recognition Night, that was really fun, um, first annual is always fun to attend, and that will keep going year after year. I also attended the MBTA Session, uh, that Maria, uh, had planned for us, which well-attended by the various committees around town, good dialogue, um, a lot of learnings there. Uh, was happy that the election went well for Tri-County, um, so that was good. Uh, I had the pleasure of being the judge for judging the pumpkins that were here on, on Halloween. Uh, there are some very talented people, and I will call out your wife, uh, your wife, those donuts were amazing. I actually sent that picture to some family and friends, and they were like, oh my god, those are real donuts, I'm like, no, they're not.
Unbelievable, they were all amazing.
Oh, sure, it's amazing, I took, no, it's phenomenal. Um, and then to, I am sitting at this table, the least experienced on the ins and outs of what's happening with our warrant committee, so knowing that the next few months are crucial, and, and more importantly, just a discussion we just had here with Mike and the, um, school building committee, I sat through last night's meeting, um, I was happy I did, and I'm gonna try to continue to stay in touch with that as much as I humanly can. Um, they do phenomenal work, and, um, what, what, what's ahead of them is not an easy task, so. Um, the dog control bylaw group reached out, I think they're on our next agenda.
Coming in the end of November.
Okay, so they have some requests to put in front of us, that then we as a, uh, uh, leadership group will decide what goes on, the warrant for, and I'm not even gonna say if, I think it's a will, um, just exactly what will we be putting on it. And then there are two emails that came to my attention, uh, over the last couple of weeks. Um, one was a resident that has some concerns that she's brought forward to us before from the Medfield Meadows. Christine, you were on that, I'm curious, did we make any headway with some of the damage that's been done?
The building commissioner, uh, has been out there, met with them a couple of times, uh, and I can assure you the gate is locked.
Okay, so is this, has the citizen been kept in the loop there, so she's?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, just, and I'll follow up with her tomorrow.
But if not, uh, yeah, but she, uh, feel free to reach out to the new building commissioner.
Um, uh, Dina, Dana?
Dana.
Okay, yep, perfect, and then.
That's the neighbor at the gate?
Correct.
Yep, and then there was another, uh, resident that sent an email to the three of us, uh, expressing concerns about the new Healy Affordable Homes Act, which would be, uh, I think each town is gonna be voting on for any potential tax on two million dollar homes and above.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I, it's not something that we're gonna address tonight, but I, I appreciate those type of emails, um, and I think that's something as we learn more, we can determine, I mean, like.
Yeah, we haven't even, we haven't even had a chance to look at it.
It's not something we have to act on right now?
No.
Or, or, or is something we would have to act on at the town meeting, or?
We haven't even, we've been so busy trying to get the budget ready, we haven't even, uh, looked into what our next steps are for that yet.
Okay. Uh, and then I will give a shout-out, because, uh, I am a avid walker up at Medfield State Hospital, my furry friend. Uh, Paul McKechnie's group has done a phenomenal job, kudos to him, I mean, it is night, you know, Bill, you're up there, it's night and day with what it looked like at the end of July, and it's taken him a little bit of time for all the right reasons, but it's funny, I was walking up there last night, and I was talking, uh, two nights ago, and I was talking to someone, and they looked around, and they're like, what happened? So I'm like, well, you know, we, we, we took care of what, what was going on, so, uh, kudos to Paul and his staff. Um, and then, let me see, go to one more. And other than that, no, actually, I'm good, I, some of the other things I've had a chance to talk to you about, uh, and I, I committed to go to the Council on Aging Meeting, the first, the first one, the, the December meeting, because I do wanna bring forward, one of the, one of the discussions we had just as I was leaving my meeting the other day with the Medfield Cares About Prevention is, you know, in this town, and someone can tell me I'm speaking out of turn, we're short on space, especially for, um, the middle-aged kids to meet. And, and I see the Council on, oh, wait, let me correct it, the, the center at Medfield, um, as a building that after four o'clock during the week, it shutters. And I know early on throughout the COVID, there were reasons why it was done, but long story short, I do, I would like to sit with Council on Aging, kinda talk through some ideas. Um, I know funding is part of the concern, um, the Medfield Foundation, Kirsten was quick to chime in and say, Eileen, I've talked to Katie about some funding opportunities. So there's a dialogue that can be had, there's a dialogue that I'd like to have with Council on Aging to just crawl, walk, run, we're trying to maybe use some of that space after four o'clock. Um, and, and, and certainly talk through any concerns, try some things, I know that they're, they, the, the Boy Scouts are using it throughout the month. I know there was just a, a recent event there, uh, I don't know if it was a book club or somebody that, Sarah was explaining to me. So there are events being held at the center that haven't been held there over the last couple of years, so, um, I will be doing that in the beginning of, early December. And I think that is my recap.
Okay, thank you. So I would just congratulate you, Chris, on starting that, uh, recognition night that we all went to at the Zulu, nice event. Nice event, good idea.
But I I think all of the congratulations has to go to Brittany. It was her idea after working on the survey and.
Congratulations and thank you to Brittany then.
That was her project.
It was, it was nicely done, and it it'll be a nice addition to the town's annual calendar. I thought the the MBTA's zoning information session was helpful, and I'll tell people that there's another one coming up on December fourteen, six o'clock at the Public Safety Building again. There's also gonna be one on December fourth on the IE zoning district at six o'clock, I think at the Public Safety Building as well. So one of the most fun things that I did was with Leanne LaBelle. We went to the Dale Street School at lunch hour last week, and we we were, we were hucking for the Angel Run. So we had our funny hats and we had our shirts on, and I was gonna bring my shirt and hat, but I forgot. And and we had stickers, and and I went looking for stickers, and I couldn't find them for you guys, but I'll get you your stickers. And it was actually amazing to watch four hundred kids eat lunch in four shifts over a very short period of time. It's like an hour and a half, twenty minutes at a at a shift. They just, it's like a a well-oiled machine. And so we got to talk to four hundred kids in a matter of an hour and a half. And and try to encourage them to get their families to come to the Angel Run, which is on December three or four, I think, this year.
December third.
December third. It's a fun event. It's just a fun run. You can bring your dog, you can bring your baby carriage, you can bring anything. I had office hours in in a week or two ago, and I had Jean Minio come and talk to me about her project. The Medfield Foundation Legacy Fund had a meeting, and it's it's still making good progress. I discovered that because I had suggested that Outreach talk to you about the Medfield Cares About Protection, they told me that I couldn't come to their DEI meeting that you went to, so they filled me in on that later. I I had told them that if that if they wanted, they could just have you go instead of me if it creates an issue at any point. The Energy Committee had a had a very folk meeting just this past last Wednesday. Susan McPhee's back on board. We talked about the Green Communities Act and the status of those grants. And and this is where you're you're melding these things in with the capital budget stuff that needs doing. We talked about the community choice aggravation. The stabilization fund projects, Paul Federkopter, I think it is, that's terrible. I had trouble with his last name, but he gave a really good report on those. Sustainability language, Andrew Gerald's working on on this language that I think will be very helpful for the town in terms of of how we, how we position things. Hillary passes, talked about the state is encouraging something called climate leaders. This is Green Communities two point oh, apparently. And we thought that that that's something that we should look at, but maybe not in the near future. And lastly, I went to Bill Masaro's Halloween after he'd gone to bed. But everything was still working, Bill. It was wonderful. It was just so impressive.
I missed that. I'm bummed.
I took all kinds of photos, but there were, you know, they they don't show much because I'm not a very good photographer. It was about as good as my photos of the Veterans Legion Day event. So and that's it, I guess. Anything else that we need to tell people about, Chris? Oh, Chris, go ahead.
I also just want to make a quick comment that I was sad to see the email from Scott McDermott, that he will not be our town moderator. Going to our next town meeting.
Yeah, on the other hand, he said he might be more vocal, so.
But will the, will the next town moderator be able to cut him off? That's what I wanna know.
Chris Potts, I just wanted to, I don't know whether you knew this or not, but the house, Medfield Housing Authority canceled their meeting today. They didn't have a quorum. They were supposed to meet at six thirty. They're gonna be meeting on next Tuesday. I got a call from Candace this afternoon to let me know.
Before Thanksgiving?
Yes, they're gonna meet next Tuesday. So I just thought you might wanna know that.
Is that Rosebud two point oh?
I think so.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And I would just mention to people that in the in the informational material was the Medfield Economic Development Vision Draft in Existing Conditions Memo from October twenty twenty-three. That's kind of interesting.
Yeah, I agree.
Do we motion to adjourn?
We do.
All right. I motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, aye. Thank you, everybody.